Can I have a motion to reopen the public board meeting? Moved by Commissioner Bondima, second by Commissioner Richardson, all in favor. Motion passes one, two, three, four, five, six, zero with, yes, six, zero with four absent. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask the band to, and the color guard to present the colors with the Star Spangled Banner. So we'll present the colors first and then we'll do the Star Spangled Banner. Permission granted.
Thank you ma'am. Over there, march.
So I'd like to thank the JROTC from Patterson High School, Cadet Major Cameron Fox, the color guard commander, Cadet Airman Denoy Hamilton, the rifleman, Cadet Colonel Daniela Batista, national colors, Cadet Captain Ashlyn Simmons, state colors, and Cadet Master Sergeant Dale Vestor, the rifleman. I'd also like to thank our student performers from Poly under the direction of Jerel Garner, Michael Affalabi, Anna Lee Anderson, Taiwan Christian, Catherine Field, Xavier Gacyen, Journey Gilliam, Monica Gonzalez, Monica Green, Hunter Green, Larry Holmes, Artik Holmes, Miles Johnson, James Jones, Cia Sha Leslie, Calvin Lewis, James Lindsay, Mahmoud Lindsay, Salashi Little, Shanil McCullum, Kanay Noel, Ayo Okita, India Oliver, Ingrid Rivera, Helen Sansenbacher, Xavier Ship, Sarah Sorto, Anique Thomas, Jayvon Trustee, Precious Conte, and Whitney Patterson. Let's give another round of applause for both our JROTC and our performers.[326.83][326.83](applause) And I'm sorry for all the names that I butchered on that list. It's a big band, fabulous band. I'd now like to ask Commissioner Chinia to lead us in a moment, to lead us in a moment of silence.
You didn't butcher my name, thanks.[349.41][349.41](laughing) No. On a serious note, please, I'd like you to take time to recognize the passing of several city schools employees and a student. Each of these individuals was committed to supporting our students through their work and they will be remembered fondly by the greater city school community. Tonight, we send our deepest condolences to their friends and family. It's with deep regret reinforming you of the passing of Carolyn Darby, who served in city schools for 32 years as an instructional assistant and special education assistant. Ms. Darby unfortunately departed on April the 12th and will be missed greatly by her family, friends, and city schools. It is also with deep regret reinforming you of the passing of Dr. Serene Peterson, who served in city schools for three years as an educational specialist, too. Dr. Peterson unfortunately departed on April the 27th and will be missed greatly by her family, friends, and city schools. Mackai Perry Anderson was a 12th grade student at Renaissance Academy. He received his entire education in Baltimore City Public Schools. His educational journey began at City Springs Elementary Middle School where he was well-known and loved by all the staff and students. He participated and excelled in basketball and football. He continued his journey at Renaissance Academy where he was diligently working with his principal, Temantha Woodhouse, and mentor, Antoine Cooper, and was set to graduate this spring. Mackai loved listening to music, singing, dancing, and writing song lyrics. He also enjoyed art and loved to draw images of people. He touched the lives of everyone he met and will be dearly missed by all who knew and loved him. Please join me for the moment of silence.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to approve prior open session minutes. Moved by Commissioner Berkeley, second by Commissioner Richardson, all in favor. Motion passes 10-0. I'd like to have a motion for the approval of the closed session summaries. Moved by Commissioner Berkeley, second by Commissioner Frank, all in favor. Motion passes 8-0 with one absent. I'd now like to get, I'd like to receive some reports from board committees who have met, which have met since the last meeting. Operations?
Okay, operations did not meet, have not met, and we will be meeting next week from 10 to 11:30 here in this room. And, okay, May?
And, yes, as long as you have the floor, why don't you give a May update?
Thank you. At the May committee meeting in Indianapolis, the big conversation was Carwin Commission reports, and, and there's, there's going to be a work group this summer on the funding, and the Carwin Commission is going to reconvene in the fall. That was the big topic at May board.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Commissioner Bondima. Commissioner Hassan, Policy Committee, she's not here, so we'll wait till she comes back. Commissioner Berkeley, Teaching and Learning?
Yes, we met on May 7th, and we had a very full agenda. We talked about, we got an update on graduations and, and dropouts. We talked, we got an update on the blueprint. We talked about charter schools, and so it was a, it was good meeting with good content. Thank you.
My comments tonight was going to be to present the, to recognize the BTU so that they could give, share their school safety task force findings, but we're actually going to defer that presentation until the next board meeting, so we will not get the recommendations tonight. I think they're pretty much hot off the press, and so they want to have a chance to, you know, prepare the presentation. So with that, I'd like to hear, have a motion for the approval of the PEP agenda and the appeals and hearings. People could check their cell phones, we've got a lot of binging and singing and tuning going on.[639.35][639.35](laughing) I don't know where I got that. Motion for the approval of the PEP and the appeals and hearings. Moved by Commissioner Chinia, second by Commissioner Berkeley, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Bondima, Chinia Kashani, Reed, Frank, Berkeley, Richardson. Motion passes 8-0 with one absent. And with that, in Dr. Santalisa's absence, I'd like to ask Chief of Staff Perkins Cohen to do the CEO comments.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Kashani. So I'm filling in here for Dr. Santalisa, who we hope will be joining us a little bit later at the meeting. So first, I want to talk about the BTU Safety Task Force. Last Friday, the Baltimore Teachers Union released its preliminary recommendations for, of the various subcommittees of the School Safety Task Force. We really welcome their partnership on this issue and their leadership in identifying ways to ensure that staff members and students are safe. We'll closely review the final recommendations of the task force when they're presented to us. Naturally, City Schools shares the BTU's focus on school safety and the security of our staff and students, and have been working for the past several months on developing and implementing a comprehensive school safety upgrade. First, we performed lock and surveillance projects at select schools using survey data from school police, from the IT department, and school support staff to determine our priorities, and will complete a formal safety evaluation at every school by June 15th. In Phase Two, we're going to be establishing visitor security procedures and protocols, as well as the corresponding security infrastructure at all schools. We'll be installing surveillance cameras where needed and metal detectors at the single point of entry in all secondary schools. It's important to note that all of these steps are just the beginning, and we will continue to examine and improve security measures and procedures moving forward. We look forward again to the final recommendations from the BTU Task Force and the opportunity to continue to work with them to ensure, to ensure the security of our staff and families and students. Next, we're going to spend a little time recognizing folks who have really been an important part of the United Way campaign this year. As you know, this schools, this year's City Schools United Way fundraising drive concluded recently, and we're pleased to recognize those schools and central office departments who were our top performers. This year campaign, this year's campaign raised more than $134,000 for this great cause, and I would like to call out our city schools co-chairs, Dr. Andrea Bowden and Monique Sims for their special, for special appreciation, along with Sophia Minut, and Bruce Crannick from the United Way.[813.19][813.19](applause) Well, so I'm going to read through the other folks, too. Oh, so, so you're good. That was just, that was just the beginning. Yeah, yeah. So, in fact, we're recognizing so many people that I'm asking you to be a little patient with applause until I get to the end of this long list. Many of our coordinators are with us tonight, and so I'm going to ask them to be recognized. Why don't we have you stand up when I call your name, but then we'll hold applause to the end, once we get all, everybody recognized. So first, we're going to talk about our top schools by their level of participation. So the first, the first school is Eager Street Academy, who had 100% participation. The coordinator, Irvin Dorsey, and principal Laura Deanna, I saw Laura here.[861.12][861.12](applause)
100%, it's worth it.
100, okay, good. All right, so I appreciate the enthusiasm, but believe me, I can see the list that you can't, there's a lot on it, so I love the enthusiasm, but let's try to hold it for a real rousing round of applause at the end. Okay, the next top performer is Connections, and the coordinator Wallace Lane, I believe, is here, too. Wallace, if you're here, if you could stand. Career Academy coordinator Morris Vercena, if she's, if Morris is here, if, oh, great. And Franklin Square Elementary coordinator Deneen Griffin, and principal Terry Patton, if they are here, could stand. Okay, and then we're going to our top schools by donations. So Hamden Elementary, the coordinator is Melissa Young and principal Foster, I don't know if she's here. Okay, Baltimore Polytechnic, the coordinator is Rene Leggett, I didn't see Rene here. Then Historic Samuel Colridge Taylor Elementary, the coordinator is Tiffany Wade, and the principal is Betty Adams. Medfield Heights Elementary coordinator is Arlene White and principal Amber Kilcoin, if she's, there you are. Beachfield Elementary coordinator Courtney Smith. Achievement Academator, Achievement Academy coordinator Joyce Venable and principal Verdi, if he's here. Dave's not here. Okay, good. ACE Academy for College and Career Exploration coordinator is Molly Bloom, if she's here, please stand. Marie Ferring, the coordinator is Erin Lazard. Frederick Elementary, the coordinator is Kendra Brooks. Okay, the next category is our top fundraising schools, so, which is Murvo, the coordinator is Regina Watkins-Cousins, and principal Langston, if they are here. That's good. Highlandtown Elementary coordinator Iris Lewis. And then finally, our top central office department. So our legal office had top participation, and the coordinator is Christine Thomas, if she's here. The academic office had top donations, Lori Lynn Sutton, Ashley Sudbury, Jessica Foster, Kenees Pendleton, Daniel, Danny Heller, Stacy Moody Keel, and director Sarah Warren. The achievement accountability, both for participation and donations, the coordinator is Latrice Butler Paris, and Mark Kennedy, who I saw walk in, who was standing up right back there already. Human Capital for its participation and donations, so we had Danielle Thomas and Yumika Horsey are the two coordinators. Communications and community engagement for participation, we had Christina Coleman and Monique Sims, who I know are back in the back, if you could stand up. Finance coordinator Angela Carrington. And operations for participation and donations, the coordinator is Ashley Rich. So let's have a big round of applause for those who worked so hard to raise money for Christine.[1042.15][1042.15](applause) It's great, it's a great accomplishment, and thank you so much for all of your work on this. That concludes my remarks for the evening.
Didn't do a PEP, but there is a PEP.
There is a PEP, you are right. So that does not conclude my remarks for the evening. Jeremy's here.[1070.33][1070.33](laughing) Chief Grant Skinner.
Everybody's filling in.
Good afternoon, commissioners, and Chief Perkins Cohen, we have one appointment this evening. He can't be with us, but we'll recognize that Barry Cyrus, currently elementary teacher with District of Columbia Public Schools, is appointed assistant principal at the school currently named William Penderhugh Elementary Middle School, effective July 1st.
Okay, so I'd like to review the consent agenda items. We can, let me know any items you want to pull. After general public comment, we will come back to it to see if you want to pull any other items. So, let's see. There's two items that are set, scheduled to go by consent. Joshua, both of these you are able to vote on, so when we do vote, we'll separate these out. Item 8.01, Policy EEA, second reader for transportation. Item 8.02, second poli, second reader, I'm sorry, for Policy IKA for grading. And we have a number of procurement items, procurement items. 9.01 is Council of Great City Schools. 9.02, the Maryland Association of Boards of Education. 10.01, Kendall Hunt Publishing Company. I'd like to pull that, can you say what your questions are?
I'd like to learn more.
Yeah, your mic.
I'd like to learn more, it's pretty intriguing.
He has to catch up.
Pretty intriguing, I'd like to learn more, please.
So it's just for information purposes?
Yes.
Yeah, we only ask that so that the staff knows what they're coming to talk about. So we'll pull item 10.01. Item 10.02, DBQ Project?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to pull that.
And your questions?
I want to learn more, just, I want to know a little bit more about that, particularly the effectiveness of these binders in this program, when it, when we used them in city schools prior. Apparently, we did. I just want to know a little bit more information about that, and how it relates to the current social studies curriculum. I'd be interested to hear more about that before we, before I vote on it.
Item 10.03, Translation Interpreter and American Sign Language Services. Item 10.04, Pearson Assessments. Item 10.05, Improving Education?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to pull that one also. I want to know more about the 10 schools that form this network improvement community, and a little bit more about Strong City and Improving Education, the fiscal sponsorship. Just want to know more about that before I vote on it.
Okay. Item 10.06, Fine Arts Extended Learning Services. Item 10.07, Johns Hopkins University Center for Talented Youth.
Please. Selectivity and selectiveness, please.
Say it a little bit louder.
I'd like to be, find out about how it's selected, and the selectiveness of the organization.
Item 10.08, Adapt Pharma. Item 10.09, Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning. Item 10.10, College and Career Readiness Extended Learning Services. Item 13.01, J.F. Fisher. Item 13.02, TJ Distributors. Item 13.03, Commercial Cabling and Sound. 13.04, Commercial Cabling and Sound and Denver Alec. Item 16.01, Hogan &amp; Levels U.S. Okay, so we are going to pull items 10.01, sorry, 10.02, 10.05, and 10.07. All others will go by consent. Okay, great. We are what I would call unusually significantly ahead of schedule. So what I, this is not a bad thing, it's not a bad thing. But I do want to respect the fact that we tell people that public comment does not start till 6:00. So what I'm going to ask is if Board Executive Gant would be willing to present his two information and discussion items at this point?
Sure.
So we're going to go to item, there's two items under information and discussion, item 18.01 and items 18.02. The first one is BBA, Board Powers and Responsibilities.
Okay. Madam Chair, members of the board. So first, I'll be presenting on, as Board Policy, BBA, Board Powers and Responsibilities. Having technical issues. So BBA Board Powers and Responsibilities is a conversion of Board Rules 101.01, 102.01, and 102.02. And we're also introducing this policy to align with amendments to the state law, since the board rules were originally passed. So a little history, prior to 1997, city schools functioned as a Department of Baltimore City. Legislation passed by the Maryland General Assembly in 1997 created a city-state partnership and a new entity, the Baltimore City School Board Commissioners. The partnership is intended to improve the quality of education through increased funding from the state and improve the management administration of city schools. The partnership also ensured that city schools operated the same as the other 23 school districts in Maryland, and now that the board is the sole entity that oversees the operations of city schools. Previously, the mayor and the governor jointly appointed commissioners, but legislation passed in 2017 removed the governor's role, so now the mayor is the sole person responsible for appointing and removing board members. So the purpose of the board is to raise the level of academic achievement of the students in Baltimore City Public School System, and improve the management administration of the public school system in Baltimore City. In essence, the board's charge is to raise the level of academic achievement of the students in Baltimore City. So next are some, some of the powers and responsibilities of the board, this is not a comprehensive list, but I'm hitting the, in my opinion, the most important ones. First is establishing policies for the conduct and management of city schools. And policies are established, they are originally introduced in the policy committee, and our topics are jointly determined by the board and the CEO. Approving annual budget, appointing the CEO, conducting the annual evaluation, appointment of all teacher, principals, teachers, and other certificated and non-certificated personnel, and setting, setting legislative agenda for the district. Establishing a personnel system governing certificated and non-certificated employees, and that includes hiring a performance-based system for personnel evaluation. Establishing curriculum guides and courses of study, adjudicating appeals to decisions made by the CEO, review and approval of public charter school applications, and establishment of a procurement system and improving expenditures above $25,000. So we talked about some of the powers, these are some of the responsibilities. As far as our city schools reporting to the state, of course, we do very, several comprehensive reporting on our finances. We, every year, city schools must submit a comprehensive master plan, which kind of details how you will, how the system plans to raise achievement and achieve its goals. The comprehensive educational facilities master plan, which again includes our facilities plans as far as closing, closings, openings, and plans to open new schools. And the 21st Century Schools Building Program Annual Report, which details the progress report to the 21st Century Schools program. As far as our city, city reporting requirements, every year, our budget must be submitted to the city council for approval. And I, just for clarification from a question from policy committee, the city council approves the budget, and the mayor can approve, veto, or take no action, but again, the action lies with the city council. So some updates after feedback from the policy committee. First was asking, first request was to compare the policy of other districts to possible changes, and for that, I added a purpose section. Also in that purpose section, our incorporation, suggestion from Ms. Kim Truhart was incorporating principles of equity and transparency to the policy, that was added to the purpose section. Commissioner Jane DeSain requested a cross-reference to existing policies, and that was included in Section 3, which is the policy references. And I also, in the presentation, clarified the role of the city council in budget approval. So, was any, any questions?
Commissioner Hassan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Gant, for the changes that you made. Just one wordsmithing piece, there's still a couple of incidents where we're referring to all students, but in line with our upcoming, hopefully to be approved equity policy, could we change that to each student?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, for my own ignorance, remind me of the next steps for this?
It'll go to second reader.
Second reader, okay, good. That's what I thought. And I assume the same thing is for eighteen oh two, you're going to cover now?
Yes.
Okay.
So next is Policy BDF, which is the Parent and Community Advisory Board. This is a conversion of Board Rule six oh two point zero zero, and there were also some additions to the policy that were not in the original board rule. So a little history on P-CAB, the Parent Community Advisory Board was established by statute nineteen ninety seven, and P-CAB is the point of contact for the parent, for parents in the community through the system to bring information back to the board and the CEO, so the board and CEO had the information to make appropriate policy decisions based on the information they receive. So the P-CAB Board is comprised of fourteen members. Three members are appointed by the plaintiffs in the, in Von G versus Mayor and City Council case, representing parents and students with disabilities. Practically now, the Disability Rights Maryland makes those appointments. Two members are appointed by the plaintiffs in Bradford versus the Maryland State Board of Education, Board of Education case. And subject to approval by the board, seven members are appointed by the CEO. Three members from a list submitted by the PTA Council of Baltimore City, two members from a list submitted by the area-based parent networks, and two members from a list submitted by Title One liaisons. And finally, two, two not subject to approval by the board, two members are appointed by the CEO from other parent and community groups in Baltimore City. There is an application process for the P-CAB Board, the process typically opens up in March, and actually, we're currently in the middle of an application process if anybody's interested. So you didn't, and also, you do not need to be a parent to serve on P-CAB, just have an interest in children. And just as part of the application, it's just a, it's just a cover letter and resume, so. So some of the policy additions, again, that were not in the board rule, that are in the policy are P-CAB input on the board policy matrix, a compliance section and regulation. So the board policy matrix, and this is posted online, is the schedule of policies the board will be, will be addressing throughout the school year. So what we've added is, at least six weeks prior to the board annual business meeting, P-CAB will have an opportunity to see the board policy matrix and give input on policies that they would like to see for next year. We've also added a compliance section, which I'll detail in the policy, and the regulation's entirely new. So some of what, we talked about what P-CAB is, but some of what it does. They have, they hold quarterly meetings with the CEO to address parent concerns and exchange information. They submit, they distribute surveys to parents on upcoming policies. One notable, one notable, one notable instance I can think of was when there, there's Army School Police, they did a lot of work of surveying parents on that. They hold regular meetings in communication with the CEO's staff. Their recognized group at these board meetings mean they have five, they don't, they have five minutes, they have a result, reserve five minutes to speak. They have monthly general body meetings in this room from the first and third Thursday of each month. P-CAB receives the, prior to debut at the Policy Committee, the Board Policy Committee, P-CAB receives a copy of the policies, has a, has an opportunity to weigh in and give their input on those. Of course, advocacy on behalf of parents, P-CAB attends all PT, attends PTO and PTA meetings throughout the city. And this year, all P-CAB board members adopted five geographically diverse schools to kind of check in on and build a relationship, it's kind of similar to like an adopt a school. So P-CAB can re, P-CAB can reach at their email address or their Facebook page, which is at PCPSPCAB, and the next general body meeting is actually going to be Thursday at six thirty in this room. So just some of the changes after Policy Committee. A request was made for some kind of compliance and accountability with P-CAB, considering that they do report, they do advise to the board and do receive a budget. So we added a, in the policy, a compliance section where the P-CAB will need to make quarterly reports to the board on the activities in progress, and that can be via a presentation at this board meeting or something, or written report. We drafted, I drafted a regulation, and this was based on several requests from the Policy Committee. One, a timeline for appointment, clarifying the timeline for appointments to the advisory board, ensuring more diversity in the appointments to the advisory board, and a timeline for P-CAB's proposed budget submission to the board office. Those are all included in the regulation. Finally, two changes after talking to the Office, the Office of Family and Community Engagement. The chief, and this is again enshrining what's already going on, but the chief of Communications and Community Engagement, or designee, will serve as the district liaison to the advisory board, kind of like a point of contact for needs and capacity building and capacity building. And finally, the Office of Communications and Community Engagement will annually offer a workshop for the advisory board, just on general board best practices in navigating the district and other needs. So, finally, I just want to give a particular channel to P-CAB, of course, they were a huge help in helping to draft the policy and get feedback, and I believe Julianne Kelly's still here? I think so.
Yeah.
And particularly, Monique Sims and FC, the Family Community Engagement Office was a huge help with this, so.
Terrific.
Yep.
Commissioner Hassan has a question, comment?
I do. A, thanks again for your diligent work on this and getting the regs, I think is an important piece, so appreciate that. And this may actually be a question that you want to throw to Julianne. It doesn't, there's nothing in the regs that says anything about leadership structure, or timeline, or roles of leadership, so while Julianne is just the chair now, and I, and can't necessarily speak for generations of chairs, is that something that would be helpful to P-CAB to have codified a little bit? And if so, can we throw it in? So I'll let the two of you talk about that offline if you want, or you're welcome to respond.
Well, I can, I can respond to something that might be considered, but P-CAB does have bylaws that kind of talk about board elections and chairman, so I kind of wanted to keep their autonomy to create their own rules. But again, if that's something we can talk about in between first and second read, if they want to include anything in the regulation about that.
It might be nice just to at least crosswalk it, so that people are aware when they go to board policy documents, that, that bylaws is an additional, or to think about the role of bylaws versus regulations, since we have them now.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner McFadden?
Ms. Gant, is it, do you think that it is appropriate to engage with the PTA, the city PTA? Did we engage them or consult?
Yes, so I, I sent the, a copy of the policy to DRM, the ACLU, and the City PTA Council, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, and then, secondly, and finally, for me, in the actual policy, should we, do we have to specify the chief engagement officer, or should it just be the designee? In the event that maybe roles change, or the title changes again, not the role, but the title changes, and we don't have to go back to amend the policy, if it just remained the CEO's designee? What do you think?
I actually think that's a good idea, because it would prevent having to go back, so, yeah.
We know who it will be, right, but in the event that the title changes, we don't have to go back and revise the, or amend the policy?
Yeah, that's a great addition, so.
You good, Julianne? You good?
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Just feel like it's been so great over the last couple of years to kind of clean up all this policy backlog. Nice job, Martha, really nice job. And you too, Christian, it's, it's, it's good. Yeah, that helped, that helped. All right, so we still have a little time, I'm going to ask Ms. Alvarez to come, we're going to look at eighteen point zero three, the two thousand nineteen charter applications for opening in school year two thousand twenty-one. This is merely a heads up about what the applications are. At the next board meeting on the twenty-eighth, we will have presentations from these four schools, yes? So we'll learn an awful lot more about it then, but this is just a, kind of a general information about what's to come, right? Okay.
Yeah, the twenty-eighth is the work session for the schools to share their application with you and then take questions directly from you.
Great.
So Angela Alvarez, I'm the Executive Director of the Office of New Initiatives. Good evening, everybody.
And I'm Trevor Roberts, I'm a specialist in the Office of New Initiatives. So tonight, we're going to be looking at the four applications for new charter operators that we've received this year. On an annual basis, the district takes applications from organizations who are applying to open charter schools. This is the timeline and process, just some quick highlights are that we received applications in March. Applications go through a review by the Charter and Operator-led Schools Advisory Board. Tonight, as we said, we'll be presenting those applications for information. On May twenty-eighth, there is a public work session where the applicants will have an opportunity to speak to the board and take questions, and on June eleventh will be the vote for those applications. So this year, we've received applications from two organizations looking to open new charter schools, and we've also received applications from two organizations, two current schools who are looking for changes to their operating organization. So we're going to start with the applications to open new schools. The first proposal is from Patterson Park Public Charter School to open a replication of their current school called Clay Hill Public Charter School. The proposal is to open this in the Bayview community. So the academic program utilizes interdisciplinary hands-on instruction, infusing the arts and fosters creativity, critical thinking, and a lifelong love of learning. The proposed enrollment capacity would be five hundred and forty students, and just to give some background on the operator, they've been operating Patterson Park Public Charter School since two thousand eight.
Yeah, there's no clarity.
The next application is from Green Street Academy. Green Street currently operates a six-through-twelve school in West Baltimore. Their proposal is to add an elementary program to this middle high school, which would bring it to a full K-through-twelve program. The program aims to produce active citizens who will create a greener, kinder, and more sustainable world. Green Street Academy has been operating since two thousand ten as a transformation school and converted to charter in two thousand fourteen. Now we're going to get to the current schools that are proposing governance changes. The first is New Song Academy. New Song started as a new schools initiative school in nineteen ninety-seven, and their mission is not just to educate the students, but also to be a community learning center for the entire Sandtown community. They believe that converting to charter will serve this mission by adding additional funding for both the academic program and their community efforts, and they are looking to convert to charter for this reason. It'll also give them additional autonomy around their curriculum and their professional development plans.
I just want to clarify, so their charter status will enable them to be able to apply for grants that are open to charter schools to support in developing that expansion model that's currently not available to them in their current school type? So that's what they mean by additional funding, so the ability to apply for grants that are not eligible for, as well as having more autonomy over their curriculum and their instruction? So that's, that's kind of their rationale, and they would like to expand both in terms of growing their program, but also in terms of the kinds of resources that they provide to the community, and so they want to be able to do planning, work around that.
And finally, we have Rosemont Elementary Middle School. Rosemont is a conversion charter that serves the Rosemont neighborhood. Their current operator is stepping away at the end of the school year, so they are looking for a new organization to operate them. The school's mission is to prepare all students to be responsible citizens and afford them the opportunity to acquire skills, knowledge, and abilities necessary to make informed decisions that lead to meaningful and productive lives. This mission isn't going to change with the new operator, they're just looking for a new operator to partner with them to fulfill this mission. And as I said earlier, there will be a public work session following the board meeting on May twenty-eighth, which the board will have an opportunity to speak more to the applicants and to get more information on their proposals.
Questions? I mean, we'll obviously have a chance to ask a lot of questions next time, so this is scheduled to be from, is it three?
Later, seven, starts at seven.
So the operator work session starts at seven? Okay, and then we can talk about all four of these then? So the schedule of the board meeting is, will be from five, the regular board meeting will be from five to seven?
Yes.
Great.
Tentatively for everybody in the room, because it, and we've been sharing it too with our, our applicants, because I know the board, you know, it's not precise.
You said that's tentative?
Well, it's, it's dependent on the board session ending at seven. So it could be seven thirty when we.
Oh, that. I'll see what I can do.
That's true, if tonight is, maybe tonight's a good omen, that will be on time.
Yeah. Okay, we're good, thanks.
Thanks.
Angela, I think, still a little, I'm sorry? Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking that you have, let's see. You have the operator renewal, that's a long one, though.
It's long, but I can focus on the changes, most of the process isn't changing, so if you want me to do it from that way, I can?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea. All right, so we'll do, we'll do this presentation, and then we'll shift to public comment. Yeah, that works. To whom? I don't, yeah, no, I'd like to, I wouldn't want to do that right now.
So these, so this is just a list of the schools that are up for renewal this fall. At the conclusion of the renewal process, it ends in January, we do a debriefing process with stakeholders to consider changes, while also trying to ensure there's consistency and predictability with renewal, so we make slight modifications with input from operators, from the board, from the Charter Advisory Board, and other stakeholders to inform the process, we went to P-CAB. So different stakeholder groups participated in giving us oral and written feedback around the changes that we were considering. Yeah, it should be updated, you're right, it should say. No, it should say nineteen twenty, you're right, I didn't catch it, so, sorry about that. So I kind of talked through that, this is the timeline of the meetings that we've had, where on the fourteenth, we're presenting what the final renewal process will be. There are three key sections that we look at in renewal, student achievement and academic success, school climate, and then financial management and governance. That just, that's an overview of the changes, when we get to the changes, I'm just going to talk about them specifically. So, in the academic achievement component, we look at three measures that are related to park, that's absolute, that's the last year's, most recent year's data, trend, change from four years ago to the last year, the difference between those two is trend. And then growth is on an individual student basis, looking at their student growth percentiles, just like how the state looks at growth. Students starting at the same level, how they've changed in comparison to other schools from year to year over time, over again, a four-year period. We look at college and career readiness, which is looking at a mix of things, so success, participation, as well as college enrollment. We look at four-year cohort graduation data, and then the overall application is scored, as well as, we're adding a new measure this year called Effective Programming for All Student Racial Groups. I'm going to kind of skip, I just kind of high-level describe these things, so for members of the public that really want to understand this in a deeper way, this is online, as well as sample reports, so you can understand the definitions and how we look at schools, as well as all the prior renewals.
And also next year, when we're reviewing and voting on whether or not to renew charters, and they, and people say that they didn't know what they were being rated on, or they question, they question that this is the right thing, this is the wrong thing, this is, this is what it is. This is what it is.
Yes.
This is what it is.
So, so those are absolute trend and growth are kind of just quickly described, so, again, this is available online for people to look at. Fidelity to Charter is looking at, is a school delivering on its mission and vision? How are they dealing with challenges in their data? Particularly in how. Particularly in how it relates to enrollment, student attendance, dropout rate, but any kind of challenges that they're seeing in their data? And then are they delivering a high-quality programming for all student groups? So that's what's considered in the fidelity to Charter, is a qualitative measure. This year, we're adding, we're separating it. So it used to consider racial subgroup gaps. In this measure, we're actually separating out, so it's its own measure. So for schools that have racial diversity, part of the score would be for fidelity to Charter, so we're separating into two. And then the other half would be for what we're calling effective programming for all student racial groups. Here, again, is a qualitative measure, so again, we're looking at the academic data over time. So what's happening with the data between the groups of students over time within a school? And how that performance compares to the district's performance for those subgroups over time? What the school is saying they're doing about attending to the needs of all of these different groups within their school, their practices, and then the impact of those practices that we see in the results. Their awareness around how to address this, and they're using best research, like what the case they make, the evidence that they provide within their application to support the work they're doing in, doing in this area. And so that's how we're looking at this, it's how we've looked at it in renewal, honestly. Including now, we're just separating it, so it's very clear as its own measure. College and career readiness will stay the same, so again, it's looking at participation and indicators of college readiness, like the SAT, or AP, or CTE, or IB. And then success on those measures, which is based on, you know, achieving a certain score, or attaining, like completing your CTE pathway, for example, for things that are based on completion rates. And then college enrollment 16 months after high school graduation. For schools with high school grades, we're also looking at your four-year cohort grad rate. And so your achievement in that area is calculated for schools. So that's another thing that we look at in academics. In-school climate, we're not making any changes to this section. So it's still going to consider highly effective instruction, talented people, and vision engagement, which are all components that come out of the school effectiveness site review. We're still, we are making one change, sorry, I'm going to, I forgot about that. Parent, teacher, and student satisfaction, so I'm going to talk about that in a second. Cohort retention is going to be the same, so that's, are you retaining, are you keeping students in your school from their entry point into a few years later over time? Like, are they staying in your school? Chronic absence, suspensions, and effective programming for students with disabilities will be looked at in the same way that they have been historically. So I'm going to kind of skip through these pieces. Like I said, if you want, for members of public that want to look at it, this is again, available online in detail with report, renewal reports from prior years. For the climate surveys, so here's what's different. So the state has implemented student and staff surveys. So we've stopped giving student-staff surveys. The last time we did it was in school year 16, 17. We don't know when we're going to get the survey results back from the state. And so we don't think we're going to actually have it in time for, to be considered in renewal. So for this measure, we're just going to look at school years 14, 15 to 16, 17 for those, for that, for those ratings. For parent satisfaction, that is something we've consistently been providing to schools. So we will have the full five years of data for schools. Here, what we've noticed is that with parent satisfaction surveys, they bunch, meaning that this, their scoring is very close. There's a lot, a lot of similarities in the satisfaction levels that we see at schools. And so for this area, we're going to look at this in an absolute way. So rather than just looking at how you compare to other schools and setting a percentile, we're saying to be considered highly effective, if you have 90% parents with positive satisfaction at your school, that's highly effective. If you are 80 to 89%, that's effective. 70 to 79% satisfaction is developing, and then under 70% is not effective. So we're scoring it completely in an absolute kind of way. And that's it, there's, the last section is on financial management and governance. We're not proposing any changes to this section, so we're going to continue to look at the audits that schools provide. So we look at their last three years of audits, to make sure that that's clean, that's reviewed by our CFO. We look at operator capacity, is considering whether or not they're meeting key federal, district, and state requirements, if have any issues with grant management, any issues with complying with key rules and regulations, they're meeting their contract obligations. And then strategic leadership is the fourth area that comes from that site review, the school effectiveness review. And that is everything.
Questions? Thanks, so we'll do public comment, and then Angela, I believe you'll be back for 18.06? Okay, great. Okay, with that, the BTU is here to speak with us. I believe Mr. Hendricks is here, along with Juanita Ware, Brandy Boone West, and Larita Johnson. Sorry? Doesn't, no, I don't, I don't think so. No, I wouldn't get that wrong.
Always great, appreciate you. Thank you very much. I bring you greetings from Marietta English and Executive Board here. I have two executive board members with me, they can introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Brandy Boone West.
Hello, Larita Johnson.
And we all, Madam Chair and Board, members, want to thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. Like they say in church, I will not be before you long. But I do have a few things to say. You already mentioned that about the task force, they actually gave me something to read. I really don't like reading stuff off of paper. But as you know, the last six months, the task force for the Code of Conduct, we've meeting, Dr. Chin, we've been part of it. We want to thank you all for the input and the resources of people that you've allowed to come and meet with us. There was a learning opportunity for a lot of people in that room about the ins and outs of everything that goes on from the very bottom level up to the top level. So with the recommendations that we will put before you, and I think Marietta English said next meeting, we will have the recommendations ready for you. You will be kind of enlightened by, and I hope that you will look at that approach as a holistic approach, because we're trying to get back to the communal approach, as far as educating the whole child. So I saw a lot of comments about the task force, and some people, it was very negative, but it's not about disciplining children any harsher. It's actually about involving more people to get them the proper resources that they need to be successful students and successful citizens. So that's what the task force is ultimately about. So next meeting, we do look forward to sharing that information with you. It was a lot of hard work, a lot of hours dedicated to it, and again, we want to thank you for that. Now my spill, unfortunately, always is a bad side. And I come to you today because of, this is the time of year that I despise most as a union rep for teachers. This is the time of year, by May 1st, that teachers who, some teachers are non-renewed, their contract is not renewed for the upcoming year. I've been doing this work for the last 12 years, and I can say, on average, every year, there's 105 teachers that are non-renewed. And I know the big pushdown is about teacher retention and recruitment. There are several cases where a lot of these teachers maybe should not be teaching, and I agree with that. But there are also cases where our teachers do not get the support that they need. We have some teachers who were long-term subs, they brought them in during the course of the school year. They didn't have the new teacher institute training. They were not, they were not assigned mentors. They were not put on, put on performance improvement plans to help them with instruction. But instead, the district elected to non-renew their contract just because they can, under the guise of KOMAR, not because they should. And I think if we need to get back to being more about people, some things you can do, you shouldn't do everything just because you can. Please look at the whole approach as to how we're offering support to our teachers. There's a lot of time that's spent on the development of some teachers, but there's also some supports that are not given. Just today, I met with some staff members, a young lady who was brought on in January, and as of May, her contract was non-renewed. And let's be realistic, what support did we give her? She did not have a teacher mentor. She was not put on a faithful performance improvement plan. So those are the things that we need for you to look at. There might be some policy or things that you can do as the board to recommend to human capital, to look at the whole approach as to how we non-renew teachers. Once again, I want to thank you. You'll see me again in two weeks, this is just my time to talk. Doctor, I don't have my shirt on today, but I will make sure I wear my orange shirt. This is an inside, inside joke from my policy class, and I want to thank you all. Ladies, if you have anything you want to share?
Set it.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you, thank you again.
Any questions for our friends from the BTU? Thanks, and we, you want to say something, Linda?
I really have a question, I just want to say thank you for the, for the experience and the opportunity to work with you. That real, as you said, that was a very comprehensive group of folks that came together from all over the city. And I know the I, as well as the whole board, but look forward to hearing the, and seeing the full report.
Thank you.
Perfect, thanks. Yes, Jane, you are first. Our first guest tonight for general public comment is Jane Lindenfelscher.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Jane Lindenfelscher, and I'm the Executive Director of Patterson Park Public Charter School. Just if you don't know anything about us, we serve 725 students. We're a public charter school located in southeast Baltimore, grades pre-K through eighth grade. Our vision is lifelong learners, healthy families, and strong neighborhoods. And we're here tonight to tell you about a need we see in southeast Baltimore and our desire to work with you as partners to address that need. We've seen through our success at PPPCS and our work in the southeast Baltimore community that there is a seat deficit and a need to provide more high-quality seats. So we have submitted an application to open Clay Hill Public Charter School, serving 300 students in grades K through four, and expanding to serve 540 students in K through eight in the Bayview community. I'm joined tonight by Taylor Owens, a PPPCS alum, and Lizette Wells, a PPPCS parent. So I'm going to hand it over to them to tell you a little bit more about their experiences as a part of our school community.
Good evening. My name is Taylor Owens, I am a current senior at Baltimore Polytechnic Institute, and in the upcoming fall, I'll be attending Harvard University with a full scholarship. Thank you. I attended Patterson Park from first grade up until eighth grade, and I graduated in 2015. In 2016, my family, we lost our home to house fire, and the Patterson Park community, they reached out to us, and they helped us get back on their feet. I am strongly connected to the PPPCS community. I have never had this kind of relationship with any school, aside from Poly. But PPPCS, they are my family. This school has made a huge impact on my life. I was able to connect with teachers that I didn't even know. And to have that support from people that you don't know, and not from family, it really means a lot. So I definitely support the expansion of PPPCS, so, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Lizette Wells, and I'm a parent of not only an alum from Patterson Park. She was there the first day 14 years ago, and I have a very high-performing son in the seventh grade. I am very happy, I was excited when I got the notification that we were looking for the opportunity to expand. I am also a resident of the Bayview area, and I can speak to the need for what we do at Patterson Park in the Bayview area. My neighbor two doors over was scratching and clawing to get her daughter in our school two years ago. And although she did settle on another school, it is exciting to know that we do have the opportunity to serve multicultural families and provide high-quality seats. And both my children are very positive and amazing examples of what Patterson Park Public Charter School can do. Thank you.
So we look forward to answering any questions that you may have at the session on the 28th.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if anybody has any questions now, but we really do look forward to talking more on the 28th. If there's anything now, thanks, ladies. I'd now like to invite our next guest, Dr. Cheatham. I believe you have some people with you. Mr. Cheatham, or Dr. Cheatham, I just have to say, we were not allowed to discuss personnel matters at public board meetings, so in your conversation, you can't mention.
We agree and understand.
Okay, I figured you did, but I had to say it, because I, when I read it, we've got your letter, so we understand the details, but you can't mention any names, or?
We totally agree, and we're presenting that manner.
There you go, thank you, thank you very much. And are, and are you Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Thank you, pleasure.
Okay, I'm Marvin Cheatham, I am President of the Matthew Henson Neighborhood Association and Chief Executive Officer of Matthew Henson Community Development Corporation. I have with me one of the parents that has two children at Matthew Henson Elementary School. I was hoping to have a Ms. Chang here, so I will, after I finish talking, I'll ask Mike to briefly talk as well, and then I'll mention something briefly about one of the partners. What we have is a situation where two teachers at Matthew Henson Elementary School, we contend are not only being discriminated against, but we think retaliation is coming from the principal and the vice principal. Let us first say that the one teacher, who is a daughter, was selected by her peers at the school as Teacher of the Year. The mother is slated to be Teacher of the Year this year, which means they are being recognized by their peers as being outstanding in the field of teaching. One of the concerns that we have as a community is keeping the community and the school very close with one another. Very happy to say that the CDC, of which I am the chair, we took the mother, the daughter, both our teachers at this school, and the granddaughter, who graduated from the school, we sent them to Texas last year with us. We paid for their air flight, their hotel rooms, their registration, and their food because of the great leadership that they lead, not only in the school, but also throughout the community. We just feel this is so inadequate to have a ruling, if it is a rule that we don't know about, that maybe this rule should be grandfathered in, that you have two outstanding teachers, have done a great job, but because they don't go along to get along with this new principal and this new assistant principal, and by the way, our school was failed in the last two years, that we just feel that the board needs to look at some of the issues that we put in this two-page letter, and that these two individuals need to stay at this location.
Hello, my name is Michael Boyd, I'm speaking on behalf of the parents. The parents have a great concern about the leadership at our school. Y'all know we went from a top-tier school to a bottom-tier school in one year. Only thing changed was the administration and the teachers that he brought in. And the parents are concerned because we want to keep our school. They're closing Gilmore because of the same reason. The parents, the parents have no communication in the school, they have no authority. Children, kids are getting hurt in the school, nothing's been reported. There's a lot going on at Matthew Henson that really need to be looked at.
So we all received the letter, and I appreciate this, the way you structured your presentation, thank you for that. I'm now looking at Chief Grant Skinner. Have you shared these concerns with, also with the administration?
Yes, and unfortunately, I would say in one particular instance, I received an email back from the principal, and it was all in red. And basically, my board basically was asking questions that we felt and continue to feel that we have a right to ask as a community. We have basically gotten no support from this principal. We feel that they are retaliating against those that aren't going along with them.
Maybe you missed, no, no, fair enough. I, I maybe I've misphrased the question. Have you raised any of the questions and issues with the central office? You have, okay, I just want to, I just want to make sure, I, because if the, I, I'm not trying to involve myself in any of it, but I want to make sure that the people outside of that individual school are aware of your concerns.
Yes.
Okay. Other, other question? You want to say something, or no? No, okay. All right. Commissioner Bondimma?
Did I miss something in your presentation? And the question that our, our chair was asking you? And the question that our, our chair was asking you? You said that you have made communicate, you, you've been communicating with their central office?
Yes.
You did?
Yes.
But you didn't say whether you got a response?
Little to no response.
When you said little... Can we just connect you with, um, with our chief human capital officer, Jeremy, Jeremy Grant Skinner, who's sitting over there to speak with him?
We, we would be happy to.
Yeah, I think that's what we're, but both Commissioner Bondeman and I are, are getting at. So, I'm going to raise your hand or... That's, that's your guy.
Looking forward to it.
Okay, I, I, you cut me off. I just wanted to know if, I just wanted to know if he had received any communications? Yes or no? That's all my question was.
So I think we just need to connect him with Jeremy Grant Skinner. I don't, I don't know whether he's received a response yet. I mean, we were aware of the issue. We've been looking at the issue. I think there's been communications, but I don't know specifically what the response has been yet.
That's what I wanted to know.
Two week, two weeks ago, we communicated directly. It took four days to get a response by someone by phone. It's been about two weeks now, and we have not gotten, uh, a response with reference to what we consider to be the legal issue of whether someone is in a nepotism state, uh, having been in the school for five years. How did you backtrack five years? You should have known that there was a mother-daughter situation five years ago. Uh, we just, we, we have some real policy questions as to why this is being done.
Let's take it, so I think we're good. I think let's take it offline, and if, Jeremy, if you could, if you could take... Okay.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much for taking the time. Yeah. Now, our next guest is, uh, guests are Allison Schechter, Carrie Anne Malcolm, and Lauren Washington from, uh, Baltimore Montessori.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Allison Schechter, the founder and director at Baltimore Montessori. Um, we're speaking here tonight because you will hear a request for an increase in enrollment for Baltimore Montessori. Um, we, uh, as many of you know, we, uh, continue to have over a thousand students on our waitlist. Many of those are at the early childhood level, so we've been working on a smart plan for growth for our school to be able to build more seats in and strengthen our schools starting at the early childhood level. We also have an opportunity, um, to purchase and renovate a building, an empty warehouse, two blocks up from our, our current site, about a block down from this building, that is really ideally suited for an early childhood center, which would allow us to increase seats at the early childhood level and then grow our school from there. It's good timing with universal pre-K hopefully coming and possibility of needing more pre-K seats. And we look forward to being able to partner with city schools, um, in the enrollment strategy to be able to attract and retain students and families in Baltimore City. With that, I'd like to pass it to my, uh, partner in this work, Assistant Principal Carrie Anne Malcolm, and then partner in the neighborhood, Lauren Washington, President of Green Mount West Community Association.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Um, as Ms. Schechter said, um, this is a wonderful opportunity, um, for us, um, to be able to expand, provide seats, um, in the early childhood department. And she said, currently, we have over a thousand students on our waitlist. Five hundred of those students are pre-K three through kindergarten. So imagine being able to have that opportunity where we can provide these students with a stable nurturing environment that has been proven with BNPCS's success with our early childhood program, um, for this expansion. So we will definitely have more question, more answers and, um, answer some questions, but definitely, um, looking forward to, um, you guys approving the expansion.
And I, good evening. I sit here tonight wearing two hats, um, as a president of the community association and as a parent who sends their child to the school, who's on the, uh, far end graduating this year. But it's been a wonderful experience. But I, it's, to support an anchor institution in Green Mount West in growing families and in growing the nurturing, the, the budding of families is so important as the neighborhood has changed immensely. We have, um, families moving in. And I just want to, I can't emphasize that enough to, um, support the expansion of the early childhood program as the getting it, the children at the root is the most important. And I fully, uh, ex, expect this to be supported. Thanks.
Great. So this will be on the information piece tonight, and then we'll, we'll bring it back.
Right, and then, yep, voted June 11th, yep.
Yeah, so it's, it's actually helpful.
We didn't want it to be a new idea, you know?
It's helpful that you came tonight. Appreciate that.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other comments, questions? Our next guest is Lauren Green.
Couple colleagues joining me. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am Laura Green, the executive director of iMentor Baltimore. I'm going to start my comments by sharing and underscoring a familiar statistic. In 1973, only 28% of jobs require college. Uh, it is projected by 2020, 65% of all jobs will require college, and only 35% of jobs will be available for students with a high school diploma. That is why I'm here tonight, uh, to provide a brief, high-level overview of iMentor Baltimore. iMentor is not a traditional mentoring program, whether it, rather, it is a college access and success program that pairs students with college professionals as the catalyst to achieve their potential. Uh, this speaks to iMentor's ability to contribute to, collaborate with, and grow both the mentoring and college-going culture here in Baltimore. iMentor has already met and spoken with several mentoring and college access programs, and we will continue to convene as thought partners because we believe the more people that have positive, high-impact experiences with mentoring, the more these people will share their feelings with their spheres of influence so that others will become mentors or become advocates of mentoring programs. Um, iMentor adopts a whole-school partnership model, providing every, uh, student in our partner schools with a one-to-one mentoring relationship that follows every student through their junior and senior year of high school. Uh, it is a student-centric program focused on nourishing and extracting what the students are interested in, skills that they have, and what passions they possess. Therefore, our program is not something that is happening to students, rather, it is something that is happening and co-created with students. After graduating high schools, our mentors follow their mentees during their first year of college, or just as importantly, through their first year of a alternative pathway program, such as Year Up or some other high-quality career pathway training program. This model is aimed at doubling down on outcomes for Baltimore City families. We want more young people to aspire to go to college. We want more young people to become knowledgeable about the steps it takes to get there. We want to aid in the college application and acceptances here in, in Baltimore City, and we want to provide every young person in the schools we serve with their own personal champion because we know the power of relationships. Um, I just want to close on this note. This work isn't philanthropy or service. Rather, it's our contract as citizens of the city, um, to directly answer the rallying call to support our young people. So I just want to say thank you for your partnership consideration. And I have two colleagues here with me if you had any questions, but I wanted to make sure I introduce them.
Joshua? Or Commissioner Lynn, my bad.
You're fine. Thank you. Um, how many, uh, schools and how many students would you say are within this program? And how beneficial has this program been to the students?
Uh, the night, the school year 2019, 2020 is our launch year. So in the fall, we will be partnering with two Baltimore City Public High Schools, and we will be serving approximately between 160 and 200 students. And so that's mentoring and mentee pairs with that one-to-one ratio. Thank you.
Commissioner McFadden?
I think it's so smart. Thank you all for coming tonight because this came before the Teaching and Learning Committee, um, last week in the procurement items. So it is really beneficial for me and the rest of the board to actually get a firsthand, um, perspective of what the program actually does. And I think it is extremely beneficial for us to, um, come up with innovative ways to engage young people and to prepare them for college careers in life. I think it's important. I do want to know a little bit more about how you all are selecting, um, the schools that you're in, into. What is the criteria for the schools that are selected? And are you all, um, perhaps, or potentially planning to focus on schools, um, that are in higher need than some of our, um, schools that are traditionally focused on more? Can you talk a little bit about that, if you understand what I'm asking?
Absolutely. Excellent question. Did you want to take that?
Sure. I'm Sharice, Sharice Williams, managing director of new site development, who had the pleasure of leading this work before we hired our fantastic Baltimore team. So we choose schools, um, we focus on schools where students, the majority of students will be from low-income communities, which is almost every public school district that I've visited around the country.
Sorry, in this process, um, and students who are most likely to be the first in their family to go to college. In terms of the school performance itself, we are looking for schools that are doing a pretty good job of getting the bus, buses running on time, if you will. Kind of graduating students, students around the district average. Students are coming to school for the most part because our intervention really doesn't work if the students aren't showing up. But we also don't, um, we don't focus on students, on schools that are doing a super-great job of getting kids into college and graduating from college. We don't feel like we can move the needles in those schools. So in addition to those two criteria, we also look at making sure that we have a very deep partnership and the buy-in of the principal, assistant principals, teachers, and counseling teams. Because it takes all of those folks to help the partnership be successful. So those are our selection criteria.
Thank you for that. Um, as a mentor and I have a mentoring program, I also want to know briefly, if you can, how you all engage parents in this process? Um, in addition, I think it's great to have a one-on-one mentor, um, but how also are you engaging the parents? Because, um, it's a, it's a family affair. You know, it's a village that, that raises the young people, and we want to make sure that they're not only being accepted into college and, but that they're successful once they get there. So can you talk a little bit about the family component?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Danielle Staten, and I'm the senior director of program for iMentor Baltimore. Um, and so we've already kicked off, um, we're having conversations with schools about meeting with parents of rising juniors. We'll be doing that, um, before the school year ends and getting in front of them, explaining to them what iMentor is, how they can be a part of the iMentor process. So each month when we have an event, parents are welcome to join us at each of those events. They have an opportunity to get to know the mentor that will be working with their student. As the student, mentor, mentee relationship improves, um, they have an opportunity to become close with parents, uh, meet with them off-site, um, if that's something that both parent and mentor, mentor agree with. And also here in Baltimore, um, family community engagement is very important to the district. It's also very important to us, and so we plan on even beefing up that component even more here in Baltimore, um, specifically around the needs of the city and of, of the different schools we'll be working in.
If I could add, add one quick piece. One of the things that we coach students on is, we work with parents directly, but we also coach students, how do you have a conversation with your parent about the FAFSA? What is a tax return? Let's answer all your questions about what we're doing with this information and what we're not doing with it so that they become empowered to engage not only their parents, but the other adults in their lives to help them advocate for themselves and get the things that we need, that they need.
Thank you. I look forward to, um, seeing the fruit of the labor of, of your work with, with this program in our schools. Thank you.
Terrific. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next guest is Lauren McHugh. Did she have it? Good. So this is a night for Lauren's to present to us. You are the third, as it was pointed out, you are the third Lauren in a row, so have at it.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, board members. My name is Lauren McHugh, and I'm here with my classmates Andrea Salem, Chao Chao Chang, Yolanda Jobe, and Feliki Ulungala. We are students in the PhD program at Notre Dame of Maryland University. There are many facets of poverty. Nothing captures the sentiment more than the current state of our district's poverty rate since adopting the National Lunch Program in 2016. As students of Notre Dame's policy class, we investigate policies and their impact on schools, more importantly, unintended consequences on students. Baltimore City Public Schools' decision to feed all of its students has resulted in undercounting students of poverty. Currently, to be counted as low income, a family must participate in federal public assistance programs such as food stamps. It is not that the schools are seeing a decrease of students from poverty, but the issue is undercounting children, especially those from immigrant families because of this new poverty rate structure. Due to this well-intended change in 2016, poverty rates have unexpectedly decreased by over 20% citywide, significantly adversely affecting the allocation of school funds. If we want our schools to be treated equitably, we must first acknowledge the following facts. Students from immigrant families are less likely to qualify for public assistance programs or even apply for them as our current political environment is threatening to hold immigrants' use of public assistance programs against them. More and more schools have growing migrant communities requiring EL language support, English language. Loss of any funding costs schools many valuable resources, such as instructional staffing, special student loan forgiveness for new teachers, instruction materials, program cuts, and access to various grants. We propose and agree with other individual solutions that take into account the needs of all students. We need a revised policy that will help close the gap of undercounted students in regards to poverty, especially children from immigrant families. One strategy would be to create a simpler form to identify poverty, such as an income statement. This new, easier-to-use form would simply require very basic information required to meet federal guidelines. Urban school systems, such as New York City Public Schools, have successfully used a modified income form to identify students from poverty. Parents and even, and yes, even immigrant parents know and trust their local school communities to safeguard their interests. Secondly, such a revised policy and process would empower individual schools to be more creative in engaging their community. A more accurate count of need will result in a more equitable funding, which schools deserve. If the purpose of Title I is to ensure that all students have a fair, equal, and significant opportunity to obtain a high-quality education, we need to examine current policies to make the reporting of these students fair and equal. The students of Baltimore City Public Schools, all of them, need to be counted and properly funded, and now is the time to create ways to ensure this happens. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. I want to, um, I know Chief of Staff Cohen has a comment, but before she, you want to let her go first, and then I'll have... Okay. So before Commissioner Frank asks this question, Allison, if you wouldn't mind?
So I really appreciate you coming in to talk about this issue. It is a very serious issue, as you're, as you've indicated. We have spent a lot of time working on this issue and thinking about it. It's also a very complex issue. So, um, uh, we, um, we have continued to analyze it. There is really not a simple solution to it. So, um, some of the, uh, the things that you've identified as possible solutions, we've looked at, too, and there are challenges with, with all of them, um, that have other unintended consequences. Nonetheless, it is a legitimate, real problem that we are trying to figure out the solution to. We have done, taken a number of steps to try to address the issue, um, so far. So, um, one is that, um, we, um, this year, use part of our centralized Title I dollars to try to provide additional supports to schools that have high levels of, um, Latinx students or English language learners, to provide that additional support for English language learning that, um, students need. So that was one way of, um, making up some of this difference. Um, we also, in our, um, in our general funds distribution, we, um, distribute resources based on, um, a number of weights, one of which is poverty. And we've changed the count and the way we count poverty to not just include, um, those students... students who are directly certified, but also those students who score either Level One or Level Two on the WHEATA exam to try to um capture the fact that those students are not necessarily counted when we're just counting based on um on enrollment in um in federal programs that are ca- that count under the direct certification program. So um those are two ways we've thought of it. I don't at all mean to list those ways to indicate that we think we've completely solved this problem, um because the problem frankly keeps growing. Um we see more families dropping off poverty um each year. Um and I, you know, I think there's a number of reasons on the um national landscape why families are um seem less um willing to have their um addresses um available to the federal government, either by registering in those programs. So people who formerly were on those programs um seem to be removing themselves from those programs, either because they um don't want their address available there, or the current administration has also made it clear that families who um avail themselves of those programs, who are um applying for permanent status, will have their use of those programs considered against them when they apply for permanent status. So that's another reason why families eligible for those programs are um probably um um unenrolling in those programs. So those are all serious problems and because of that, the landscape keeps changing. So as we identify um partial solutions, then the landscape changes again and we have to reconsider different options. So um all that to say, it's not as if we're not aware or not taking it seriously. It's a very difficult problem to solve and um and so uh we're trying to figure it out. But we would love to talk to you and um and love any um helpful thought thought partners in trying to solve what is a very difficult problem.
Commissioner Frank?
If if you know, I'm just curious if you could say more about the income statement approach, and you said that's being done in New York City? Just if you know more about it, could you elaborate?
Um just kind of did some research um into some other urban school systems that have used those. And um it is somewhat similar, it seems, to what was used before to identify what we considered farm students. Um but maybe not quite as as detailed. Minimum, how many people live in the household and then household income. And just some, you know, address and those kind of basic information.
Interesting. Thanks.
Other questions, comments?
It's just a comment. Thank you all uh for coming. All three of you are in the doctoral program?
All of five of us.
All of you are?
Yes.
Okay. We share a colleague, Ken Patterson.
Oh, yes.
Who actually presented to the Baltimore County Board, I want to say, last week. So um it's really, thank you for coming. It's really meaningful and I think we have to continue to work um to figure out solutions to to make sure that all of our kids are achieving at high levels. So thank you.
Virginia?
I I just want to thank a person who's way in the back, who I believe is probably uh your instructor or someone from the from the university. But I just want to acknowledge Dr. Gary Thrift, who uh for many years was a colleague here, and thank him for the work that he's continuing to do to prepare folks, to uh help us to stay on our toes in terms of policy and and things that happen within our school system. So thank you. Thanks, Dr. Thrift.
So if you all want to set up a time to meet to discuss some solutions, I'm happy to do that. If just would reach out to me, um it'd be good if you CC'd um my executive assistant, Jim Brennan. Um just you'll probably get a faster response that way. But anyway, if you want to set up a time to to do that, I'm happy to do that.
And Christian, Christian, maybe you can give them the contact information. I don't know how easy it is to get Allison's, but you can, Christian will give you his card and you can reach out. Oh, there you go. There you go. There you go. Didn't have to go all the way to Cincinnati to get across the street.
Great. Thank you.
Terrific. Thanks, ladies.
Oh, just one thing. I'd love to see a white paper because judging what's happening in HUD and the US Census, if you have a solution, I'd really like to see it.
Bring it on. Um our next guests are Zoe Muhir. I don't know how to say the last name.
Moore.
Moore? Okay. And Conwin Gallimore?
Corwin.
Corwin Karen's Gallimore.
Make sure you say it in the mic so that we can get that clearly again.
I am so sorry.
Everybody gets it confused.
No, would you tell us, say say your name again? Tell us your name.
Corwin Karen's Gallimore.
Okay, then. Thank you very much, and I apologize for mispronouncing your names.
Everybody does it.
Hello, members of the Baltimore City Schools Board. My name is Zoe Moore and I'm a fifth grader at Federal Hill Prep. We became an international baccalaureate school this year, and for the first time, the fifth grade is doing exhibition projects. My classmates, Corwin, who is here, Paul, Talia, and I chose the topic of deforestation. Most people think of rainforests when they think of deforestation. We have learned quite a lot with our research, including talking with a graduate professional at the University of Maryland, as well as vis- visiting the BGE Pipeline Project in Baltimore. Part of exhibition is to complete real action or actions in your area of study. That is why I am here today. Did you know part of the reason forests are disappearing is because of cattle production? The farmers cut down the trees to have pastures for their cattle. I think every Baltimore City School student can play a part in this proposed act, in my proposed action. Just by going meatless one day of the week, popularly known as Meatless Monday, you could help decrease the city schools' need for beef by one-fifth. I am proposing that Baltimore City School cafeterias have Meatless Mondays. Kids would still have other other protein options like peanut butter, egg salad, tofu, and more. I think if Baltimore City Schools were to take this action, it could also spread to other schools, other school districts in State of Maryland, if not nationwide. This planet is the only one we have. Kids need to care about it as young as elementary school. I may not be able to vote yet, but my teachers, Ms. Langen and Ms. Morgan, have taught us that it's never too early to take action. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much. No, 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 no. Corwin, do you have anything you'd like to add? I can't believe that. Are you in agreement with her testimony? Okay. Um do we have questions?
No, I have a comment.
Commissioner?
It brings me great joy to hear you talk about deforestation. I teach a whole week on deforestation internationally, okay? And it would be wonderful if you take it out of Baltimore and out of Maryland and go national and go international. It would be very interesting, and everything you're saying is right on task. So I'm really proud of you, and I'm telling you, you're going to be our future environmentalist because deforestation is one of, people don't understand, in addition to water being number one problem, you know that right, deforestation is number two. So congratulations on making that an issue here. Thank you.
And I know that I I believe Federal Hill still has an active green team, uh because your school's done some pretty terrific environmental projects. So I hope that you, I hope that you'll both consider getting involved so that you can you can have an influence on your school and the school system as a whole. And I'm confident that um Chief of Staff will pass along your recommendation to um our that our Head of Food and Nutrition Services, who the staff in that department plan the menus. Am I correct that you'll pass along that recommendation?
That is correct, and she's always very anxious to, she loves to hear from students and get their feedback, so I'm sure she'll appreciate giving the feedback.
Twenty percent reduction is no small feat. Commissioner Hassan?
Thank you so much. Do we know, does Nutrition Services have a youth advisory board or a council of students that that meet with them and share ideas like this and?
I don't, I'm not aware that they have a formal youth advisory board. I know that Liz herself goes, Liz Marqueta, Director of Food and Nutrition, does go out a lot and speak with students and get their feedback. And then she's definitely worked with students on things like the removing of the styrophone trays, trays and so on, which was one of her sustainability um steps that she made. But she does go out and talk about menu. I mean, I know I've, when I've heard um concerns raised by students at various schools, she's gone out to them to meet with them. So she does that, whether there's a standing committee, I'm not aware that there is, but I can certainly look into it.
Yeah, it's a good question. We haven't had a, oh, this food is bad commentary in quite some time, and that's not what you're doing. So it's actually, sometimes no news is good news, but it would be nice to pass that along. It's a, it's a, it's a good idea.
Yeah, and then things like find out, do we actually serve beef five days a week? Like some of those balance questions to help figure out what our whole portfolio is. And we're trying to do more local sourcing and table, farm-to-table, those kinds of pieces, but getting young people's input on that may help encourage the process.
That's great.
Commissioner Khashani, I just want to make sure that they get a feedback loop here. So um just to make sure that our staff does follow up with them. I don't know if we have their contact information.
I can't, I can't read it well. They're at Federal Hill. Christian, if you could um get their email addresses and I, there's, are are you a parent?
Yeah, I'm Zoe's mom.
You're Zoe's mom.
I can get the teachers' phone line.
I was going to say, that would be very helpful. Um I I think I think it would be terrific, they they took the time and did the research, and we should make sure that we follow up on their questions.
Do you also have a copy of your testimony that we could have?
You can give it to, that's terrific. And if I might ask, what grades are you in? Corwin, you first?
Fifth.
You said fifth. You're you're looking at me like that because you should have heard me the first time. You're right, and you're in fifth grade as well. The fifth grade unit. I, shame on me.
IB.
Yeah, exactly. And kudos on your first year of IB. That is not a small task to take on. Would love to see you uh when you get that diploma.
All right, let's give my hand.
Come through and say hi.
Thank you very much. Our next guest is Amir Muhammad. By Federal Hill, Federal Hill Prep on the move here.
May I start? Hello, members of the Baltimore School Board, parents and educators. My name is Amir Muhammad and I'm a fifth grader at Federal Hill Preparatory School. I am here today to encourage you to consider putting an end to the use of profanity, especially in elementary schools. In an article written in the National Education Association's newsletter entitled "Swearing at School," what's your policy? Several teachers talk about the importance of cultivating an environment of mutual respect and how the use of language goes a long way in getting us there. Even the Baltimore City Public Schools Code of Conduct addresses the need for a school environment to feel positive and how a positive school environment can cause not only students to thrive, but also families and communities. This is why I started a petition at my school, Federal Hill Preparatory School, to reen- reinforce the need for all students to feel safe at school. Optimistic and free of obscene language that can get in the way of their academic achievements. I would like you to consider signing on to my petition and using your positions as esteemed Baltimore School Board members, parents, and educators to go back to your own school, schools to promote awareness around the need for more positive and mutually respectful school environments. Thank you for taking the time to listen to why language matters at school.
So are, how many signatures have you gotten on your petition?
Sixty-two.
That's not bad. That's a good start. Are you, are you getting signatures from your fellow students and teachers as well?
Yes.
How about your principal?
I haven't asked her yet.
Do you, do you have a petition with you?
Do you have a petition with you?
You pass that around, we'll all sign it. Raise your hand if that's the first time you've ever come to a school board meeting and heard us called esteemed. There we go, right there in the back. Ms. Trueheart? I'm gonna, these words are going to ring true the next time it occurs to me to say something that's not proper. I, this is a, this is a tremendous, this is just tremendous. Commissioner Hassan? Commissioner Lynn?
Thank you. You speak better than me, all of us on the board, actually. But if you could, get a, get a, a copy to me and um Associated Student Congress of Baltimore City has a general assembly next week, um and I can pass around the petition uh for you as well and then give it back to you. But yeah, thank you so much. And as well as, um because I know Federal Hill Prep is not a member of ASCBC, scony you guys, but um I'll uh get you guys contacts and then we can get connected with ASCBC because you guys should have a voice as well. Here, thank you.
So make, so make sure Joshua, you're, you can facilitate that too. Do you want to introduce yourself? You're?
Oh, I'm Wendy Moore. I'm Zoe's mom, and I'm also a volunteer on the FUDL, Federal Hill Prep's FUDL team.
Beautiful.
FUDL team, which Amir, a volunteer at the school.
So shout out to Federal Hill Prep. Good showing tonight. Good showing tonight. Good job. We listened to all testimony. I think there's plenty of evidence over the, plenty of evidence that when people make testimony and make suggestions, it matters, but it really matters when young people speak to us. Really matters. So thank you very, very much. And this will be done in just a minute. I'm I'm going to sign it and then it's going to go around and we'll give it back to Christian and then you can pick it up, Amir, okay?
Okay.
Our next guest is Marilyn Jues.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you for the opportunity to voice my concerns. However, my concerns have been voiced several times over by a number of different people, and that is this business that seems to be going on, on a continuous basis, of putting the cart before the horse. And um what I, what do I mean by that? A decision made by administration, school administration, to relieve someone of their position and then ask the community to get involved. So they've already told the person, you're fired, and then they say to the community, we want your input about the firing and the rehiring of someone new. For an example, and I'm not going to read the name.
Thank you.
But I just want to say this. As we move to the final months of the current year, school year, I want to update you on the change for school year 2019. Blank Blank will not be returning, and we will be enhancing and in embarking on a process to identify the best principal candidates for the role. Now, we understand that in Park Heights, um we're thought of as being not interested in what's going on in our community. That is not so. Our neighborhood.
We don't think that.
Okay, but obviously someone does because we are never notified about what's going to change until after the change has been initiated or completed. For example, remember a few months ago when Martin Luther King School was supposed to close? We didn't learn about that from any written anything, any emails, any, anything. It was by word of mouth, and then the next thing we hear, it's not going to be closed. Over and over again, decisions are being made, and right now we have a major decision that has been made that is impacting our community. Change is inevitable, and I can understand that someone can be asked to leave their position. However, I met with an executive, an administrator, and I asked for three concrete reasons for why the person was being dismissed. And they said, we can't give you that. We have only one, poor performance. My next comment was, please give me an example of poor performance. We put this in place and the goal was ten percent. They were at two percent, they went to five percent, but that was not enough. Then they said, the individual failed to participate with neighborhood and community organizations.
Ms. Jues?
Yes, I know. My time expired.
Finish that thought. Finish that thought.
But I just want to say this. If the, if the school board could in some way say to administration, involve the community prior to your decision-making, that's not asking too much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh questions, comments for Ms. Jues? We appreciate that you, you came to share this with us. Our next guest is Ms. Trueheart.
Good evening. Three minutes is not enough. Um, all my testimony this evening is gonna focus around budget and the lack of an adequate budget. First, I wanna, um, give a big shout out to, um, the ACLU and the Legal Defense Fund for reopening the Bradford lawsuit. Um, I'm proud to say that Liberty, um, hosted their first town hall event to inform the public of what's going on with the reopening that was filed on March the 7th. Um, and if the initial case is any indication, I get, I think it was filed in initially 1994 and we didn't see any results until 2002. So, um, this is a long journey, um, but I believe it's a worthwhile journey. The children of Baltimore City have been, um, disrespected and our schools have been underfunded for far too long. And, um, this I hope will, um, force the governor of Maryland to provide, um, relief. Um, and I understand our governor doesn't support this, um, action. I'm, I'm thankful that the school system does support it. Um, I was proud to see a representative of Elijah Cummings' office come to the town hall. Um, I've been doing some work nationally, um, with a group called Journey for Justice, which includes, um, some actions at the senate level, um, by our state, um, federal senator, um, around increasing, um, funding for schools. Um, I don't understand the previous discussion with the, the doctoral candidates about the, um, counting and undercounting of some of our brown cousins in the school system. Something changed here that reduced the number of Title I schools that we have on the books. And, and I don't...
Two different issues. Finish your test, finish your testimony.
Okay.
My bad, I don't wanna interrupt you.
So, I'd like for the community to get a better, 'cause if I misunderstood it reading the article, then a lot of other people misunderstood it. Trauma. I've been engaged in the last, um, couple of weeks, um, trying to line up support for the family of the one and the two-year-old who were shot recently here in the schools. And I'm thankful to say that, that some, some very capable folks have stood up to offer some, um, social and emotional support to those families. Um, and we need more. And, and while the one and two-year-old aren't yet students, they will be. And we don't need them to come to us burdened anymore than they are just by living in Baltimore. Um, climate, I'm understanding, we got, uh, uh, two more points.
Well, quickly.
Climate in our schools, we gotta address. And I don't think we're doing an adequate job in some places. And, um, I think there is a lot more work to be done, um, around creating climates where kids can learn, where they behave as though they understand the importance of learning and that their families are engaged. And whatever we need to do to bring that kind of environment into our school, it is critically, critically important. And I'll forego my last topic.
So, but I, I wanna ask, uh, Chief of Staff to comment on the, your earlier point on the Title I schools.
Yeah, so your, one of your questions was about, um, the number of Title I schools decreasing. Um, they're two different issues. The ti, the number of Title I schools decreased, uh, because we raised the, um, the minimum level, the minimum, minimum threshold for poverty to be counted as a Title I school. Um, in the year, um, in two years ago, when we had the, um, the significant budget gap that year, um, since we knew the resources that were going to school was gonna, were going to be reduced, um, we thought it made sense to focus the, um, Title I resources that we had on those schools that are higher, uh, con, that have higher concentrations of poverty. So we raised the bar, um, uh, that was required in order to be counted as a Title I school so that we can therefore then raise the per pupil amount that was going to each of those schools. So, that's that issue. The issue of the undercounting of, um, schools with high, um, immigrant populations is, um, is a different issue, not related.
I heard what you just said. It makes no sense when we end up with less schools receiving Title I funding and us not having adequate funding to make that up. So, why do you change the formula that, that appears on the surface to penalize us? These families...
So, it doesn't reduce the amount of resources we receive in Title I. It's a question of how we do...
No, I understand. We're getting the same amount, but you're only spreading it to certain schools, a lesser number of schools.
So, we are spreading it to a number of schools that have a higher concentration of poverty so that those schools can get a higher per pupil.
But you just said you can't count poverty adequately.
So, there is one, so, uh, you possibly are referring to, there is one school this year that fell off the list of, so in the first year, we made that change, which was in FY18? FY18, I think, 'cause this is FY, we're going to FY20, 1920. FY18 was the first year we did that. Um, so, in that year, we, um, we raised the level of poverty, um, in order to, again, provide a higher per pupil to the schools that remained on that list. Um, that list was the same in FY19. The list of schools that received Title I funding was the same in the, in the following year, in FY19. In FY20, um, there is one school that was, um, covered in an article in The Sun that fell off the list, John Rura, that does have a high, um, uh, population of English language learners. There was no change to the poverty cut rate that we used this year. It's the same rate that we had used in the past two years when John Rura was included. Um, the issue with, um, John Rura is probably because of this undercounting issue. My point is that it's not the fact that we raised the bar that removed them, that, that resulted in them coming off the list. They came off the list because of the, um, issue with the undercounting of some of their students because of the, um, the, the way we count poverty does undercount students who are immigrants.
I think, if I may, and maybe I'm mis, i, is it possible that if more immigrant students were counted, some other schools would meet the new threshold? I think that's the question.
I don't know that we believe that there are, I don't think that, there, we think there are schools other than Rura who would be counted, um, with the, um, bar that we have. Rura is the one school that, you know, after we've made that change two years ago, that, that they are now, their poverty has dropped enough where they are no longer meeting that bar. But there are, we don't, we don't believe there are other schools that are being, that the undercounting is impacting them from receiving Title I.
Teresa?
Good evening. Teresa Jones, Chief Achievement and Accountability Officer. I just wanted to clarify one point, particularly with John Rura, is that that thirty-five percent threshold is a federal threshold. So, part of the challenge around this undercounting situation is that as a district, we do not have the ability under federal law to provide Title I dollars to schools that fall below that thirty-five percent. So I just wanna clarify that point because there have been other decisions made just within the district allocations where we have been able to increase the per pupil amount for those schools that have higher concentrations of poverty. But specifically the school in question, they were impacted because of that federal threshold, not because of a district decision.
They're actually below the federal threshold at this point.
That's correct.
And so even if we reduce, lowered the bar, we couldn't lower it enough to include them because of the federal requirements.
But they're under the threshold because half the people don't have the right documentation to qualify.
That's why this school is different.
We agree with you. So we don't disagree that there's an issue there. We're just, we're, what we're saying is that the issue of moving the bar is not the reason why these school, that school has been removed. It has to do, there is an undercounting issue that is a very legitimate issue.
Yes, and how we're gonna fix it. We have not heard an answer. However, in that particular instance where they are, um, projecting a $200,000 shortfall in their budget, I think we need to figure out how to make it up for them until we can come up with a better way to count.
So we have identified a number of solutions. So, one is that for schools that are Title I, we identify, we use centralized Title I dollars this year to provide additional support to schools that have high levels of populations of English language learners. So that support allowed them to provide additional, um, um, you know, positions at their school to provide support to those communities. So that was one critical step we made this year. Um, we also have used our general, under our general funds, we, under the way we count poverty for distribution of the poverty weight in general funds, we count not just the number of students who are directly certified, but we also count students who score a Level One or Level Two on the WEDA test so that those students, if they are not counted in direct certification, they are counted, um, based on their, uh, level of English language proficiency. So that's another way to direct more resources to those schools. In addition to that, in the case of John Rura, we have used general funds to provide additional resources to support their English language learners and to provide the same level of positions that they had previously to ensure that those English language learning students don't, um, lose that support.
Good. That's the part I had not heard yet. They were held harmless.
They redeemed, received extra support for their English language learners.
And they were held harmless. Their staffing...
Not the way I would word it. They received additional support for their English language learners.
Okay. They, they will have the same staffing level in the coming year as they have now, right?
No, she's asking about the same staffing level, 'cause is she, is that what you said? Not held harmless, I...
They're not, what I'm saying is that we are providing additional support to John Rura to ensure that their English language learners provide additional support.
Yeah, that's fair enough. Commissioner Hassan?
And I'd just like to remind people that while direct certification has caused serious, significant challenges, and especially in our contemporary culture with ICE and, and vulnerability, kids aren't hungry. They get to have food by direct certification. So we're not missing anybody at breakfast and lunch and, and the dinners that we offer. So I think that's an important piece to remember that is a win in this very complicated conversation that has ripple effects throughout.
Lynn?
So, Allison, are we not, I'm not understanding. Are we saying that we're not giving, um, are we saying that we're underserving students and that's why we have lack of funding because we moved away from the form for the lunch forms? Is that what I'm getting here?
So when we made the switch to, from, um, collecting free introduced lunch forms to direct certification, direct certification is a different way of counting poverty. So, when districts switch from one to the other, they generally experience a decrease in the, um, number of students, the percentage of students who are counted as poverty. Direct certification counts probably a higher concentration, a higher level of poverty than a Farms forms. Um, so it, it is not unusual to experience a drop in the percentage of students that are, um, high poverty. The challenge is that for students who are immigrant, uh, from immigrant families, they are less likely to qualify for those programs or participate in those programs. And so those schools who had high percentages of those students experienced an even larger drop. That was true in the first year we made the switch, which predates, that was 2016, I think, or fifteen, when we first made that switch. So it predates when, um, Dr. Santa, Lysus and I came into these roles. Um, but they experienced a significant drop that year. And in the past few years, they have continued to drop at a vast, at a, at a quick, at a considerable rate. Um, again, I think as the national landscape has indicated that, you know, there's been concerns of, um, immigrant families about, um, not wanting their address being, uh, in, on federal document, or on public documents, um, or also not wanting to participate in programs that might count against them when they apply for permanent status. For those reasons, those families have continued to, um, drop off the direct certification programs and so the poverty rate of those schools has gone down.
And, and so the reason we moved away from was to protect immigrant families, correct?
Pardon?
That, that's the reason that we moved away from direct certification is because we wanted to...
No, we're still a direct certification district. We're still a direct certification district.
Okay, now I get you. Okay.
So, the challenge is that when you're direct certification district, this, it is, this is one of the challenges. Um, and so we have been trying to identify these other solutions to make up for what we believe to be a significant undercounting of those families.
I, I do wanna make just one clarification, just in the terminology. So, as Allison was referencing, sort of our district status, technically it's our participation in the Community Eligibility Provision Program. This idea of using direct certification as a way to measure poverty pre-existed our becoming a community eligibility provision district. So even when we collected forms, we still had data around direct certification, which was used to identify families and students that would be received, would, would be potentially counted within Title I allocations. It's an important distinction because what the transition has meant is we no longer have that ability to have any type of additional data above and beyond what direct certification would have given us. So even in the old world when we had forms, if a student's family participated in any of these direct certification programs, we technically qualified them based on their program participation, not based on the form that was turned in. So I just wanna clarify that because direct certification has been around for many, many, many years. Um, part of the challenge in this is, as Allison pointed out, by not having the forms, we're not able to get additional information on families that are unable to participate in the programs that would otherwise allow them to be included in direct certification.
So, I think that this has been a, I, I, we appreciate the line of questioning. Uh, it, it is fair to say that the staff, um, spends an enormous, it, there's a lot of time being spent and in conversation and collaboration with principals. So this is not something that is lying dormant on somebody's shelf. You should trust that people are trying to figure this out.
And, I appreciate the fact that we are a welcoming city. I, I just see all of this stuff going on and other people have the same questions that I do. Um, and I think having the clarity of understanding that these kinds of conversations bring is important. I think there are families out there who, who are concerned that class sizes may go up because we don't have enough teachers to go around, because we can't certify that folks are, you know, living below po, you know? What are the implications of these kinds of things on the size of classes, the numbers of teachers, the quality of teachers? And, and, and I know that in everybody's heart here and soul and spirit, people want to do the right thing, but occasionally we gotta have conversations about them.
Probably have to have conversations about it more than occasionally. This is something we've been focused on quite regularly. We spend a lot of time on it. So it's not something that we, I mean, we welcome any input from anybody on this issue. We've been working incredibly hard to try to identify solutions. So this is not an occasional issue. This is a regular monitoring and trying to make sure we're continuing to fix this issue.
And I love these kinds of issues 'cause that means I get to go find somebody.
I think...
Right, to go yell at about the fact that we don't have adequate funds for this.
So let's leave that be the punchline on the whole thing. That's, that's a true statement. Because we, I, we should move on. No, good catch.
There's a lot of budget issues. The fact that Baltimore City government is only funding us at the same level this coming year as they are this year, that's part of the problem. Two hundred and eighty-seven million dollars ain't enough, Jack Young. Hear me? Jack Young. Two, no, two seventy-eight.
Got it, got it.
Two hundred and seventy-eight million dollars is not enough.
Kim, we're good, we're good.
No, we're not.
Well... I didn't mean it in that sense. Our last guest is George Mitchell. He's everything.
Okay, sorry, thank you. Um, President Neighborhood United, which is the largest umbrella neighborhood association in Baltimore City. I'm also president and CEO of Lexington Hughes Community Business and, and, uh, Resource Center that used to be Lexington Hughes Elementary. We're doing great things up there. You know, this weekend I was on a high, that's unbelievable high. Just got off a plane a couple of days ago. My son graduated from University of California Berkeley Law School, number one in his class. So, I, I was on, on a, on a high that, that's unbelievable for a father. Um, I come back here and now I'm right... Um, I come back here and now I'm right bound low again. You know, y'all put in a place, and by the way, young man, thank you, I was the first commissioner ever to serve on the school board back in 1971 in the whole United States. So I'm glad to have you and some things that you're saying. But um, they put in places, think about community and schools. And I agree with Ms., Ms., Ms. Hughes. We as a community, we should have control of what's happening in our schools. And I don't want to mention any names again because I know the policy. But a certain person was let go and the community was not notified. And this person is one of the best principals in Baltimore City. She's been in the school system for 32 years. A person came in to let her go that's been in the system for a year and a half here in Baltimore City. Uh, our motto with Neighborhood United is our community, our kids, our responsibility. I don't know if anybody's listening to that. You know, th- this, this person at this school has the largest food pantry in the city of Baltimore for any school. Our kids are hungry. Our families need to be fed. And if you look at, I don't tell you kind of support this person got. When she first went to this school, the guy who used to be in the position that I'm in, threw all kind of letters to the school board and you received and go over here with the meetings. And she actually went to a meeting with eight of us in a meeting. And this person actually, excuse me ladies for saying this, excuse me, actually called her a bitch in front of her supervisor. Called her a bitch. I don't want this bitch in this school. In front of her supervisor, we all were sitting there. And then he, he must be really crazy because then he went after me and tried to attack me. So I know he gotta be, gotta be a little crazy, trying to intimidate me. But for a supervisor to sit there and allow that to happen to a principal in her school and then say, you gotta keep this person in your school for, the person stays in the school for the next six or eight months. That lady had to go there, straighten a lot of stuff out. Had bad teachers, kids running through the halls, turning down paper, all that kind of stuff. The same problem we're having at Pemco right now, which I won against. Have any of y'all been in Pemco? Pemco is off the hook. They're beating up teachers, they're beating up students, they're not being educated. And the exact same thing was in place when this woman was at this school. And she was able to clean, before you do anything in the school, the first thing you gotta do is get disciplined. And she got this discipline straight. And although the test scores only went up by three or four percent, they did go up because she had to go and clean that school up. Have any of y'all been in Edgecombe Circle? Probably not. Maybe one or two. Have you been in the community? Probably not. This lady takes her own personal time and go or knock on household doors when her kids are missing. And the reward you got for that for 32 years is to be dismissed without talking to us. Everybody here know me, well, the new old ones know me. They don't know what advocate I am about these kids. And this is not a personnel issue. This is a community issue. We've been, Pemco is, is, is open, uh Northwestern is closed, you closed Lexington Hughes, Kip is moving, Martin Luther King is closing. What are we gonna do about our community, about this district? We have no schools anymore. And now you're taking the best person we got in the community and you're letting them go.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, I know, time is up. I got three minutes. I know, I know. So I'm just saying, y'all, it's not right. It's not the way we should be headed in. It's not what we should be doing. And I've asked all kinds of questions. Dr. Santa Lisa told me, said, talk to the guy, chief of principal or whatever the heck it is. I called there to talk to him, they didn't know who he was. Finally, he got back to me. Folks, we gotta do something about this. This is not the way we should run the Baltimore City school system. It's not right. And y'all, and anybody know, it's not right. I'm done, my three minutes is up.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody got any questions?
Commissioner Hassan?
Just on a personal note, um appreciate the feedback and the input. Um, it's not always easy to sit here and hear hard quality feedback. But last time you visited us, you were just post-surgery. So I just want to say congratulations on your recovery. Looks like you're moving around and getting out. Hopefully, we'll see you more often.
These kids are more important. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, as always.
All right.
Based on the uh public comment, are there any additional items to uh pull from the consent agenda or the procurement agenda? So we're gonna vote on the um items that were to go by consent and then we'll uh discuss the ones that were pulled. First, I'd like to vote on two together. Uh, these are the items that Joshua is able to uh vote on. Can I have a motion to approve items 8.01, Policy EEA, and 8.02, Policy IKA? Moved by Commissioner Lynn. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Berkeley, all in favor. Commissioners Lynn, McFadden, Hassan, Chinia, Kashani, Reed, Frank, Berkeley. Motion passes eight zero with two absent. Now we'll vote on consent, uh procurement items uh that they were, for which there were no questions. Items 9.01, 9.02, 10.03, 10.04, 10.06, 10.08, 10.09, 10.10, 13.01, 13.02, 13.03, 13.04, and 16.01. Do I have a motion to approve those items? Commissioner Hassan, do I have a second? Commissioner Berkeley, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Chinia, Kashani, Reed, Frank, Berkeley. Motion passes seven to zero with two absent. I'd like to now return to the items that were pulled um so we can uh discuss questions. First item, uh 10.01, Kendall Hunt Publishing Company. Commissioner Reed had some uh just general questions uh just because of the nature of the, of the item. Do you have anything else you want to say, Commissioner Reed, or do you want them to just provide some additional information?
Yeah, 300 to 550 to a million a quarter. It looks intriguing, but I'd just like to know the strategy and the, and the students you're using.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, Dennis Truchus, Coordinator of Gifted Advanced Learning for Baltimore City Schools. Uh, we've been uh very fortunate to be able to leverage Title I dollars to make sure that we can bring this ancillary curriculum that's math-based K through six in support of not just the gift of learners, but all learners. In fact, we've, we spoke, we specifically chose this ancillary curriculum because it's designed to be used in a heterogeneous classroom, so that we can use it to also hopefully identify other students who have not been formally identified. What we basically have now are there about 40 schools that remain that are Title I funded, that we, we have not yet infused this curriculum. We're working very aggressively over this and next year to make sure all those schools have it, so that will bring us to about 110 schools that are school-wide Title I eligible, which will bring us 100% um bringing into areas that are typically not afforded the opportunity to have this kind of enriched uh curriculum and this experience uh so that there's no more excuses for leaving those kids behind. And we, we built up the dollar so that we know what we will need to purchase to fund those next 40 schools. But schools also uh can buy other ancillary materials as well if they want to buy student journals and things. We built enough in there so stu-, so schools could also leverage their funding to bring in other resources from Kendall Hunt.
Thank you. Um, motion to approve item 10.01? Commissioner Chinia, do I have a second? Commissioner McFadden, all in favor. Motion passes seven, uh Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Chinia, Kashani, Reed, Frank, Berkeley. Motion passes seven to zero with two absent. Um, item 10.02, the DBQ Project. Um, Commissioner McFadden had some questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Kashani. I just want to uh know about in the procurement overview that we received, do we see the evidence of effectiveness? And we see that we previously used um the, this program? Um, but it also lists how the program was effective in Florida and in California. So I want to know how the program was effective prior to us not using it anymore? And is there a reason why we stopped uh with this program? And how it aligns and impacts our current social studies curriculum?
Absolutely. Uh, my name is Monica Wippel. I am the coordinator of Social Studies for Baltimore City Schools. Um, I can tell you anecdotally um that the DBQ Project is a program that we've been using in the district since, I don't remember the exact year, somewhere between 2010 and 2016 when I was a classroom teacher. Um, I was introduced to the DBQ Project as a high school teacher. I used it in my US history courses. I found it to be successful with my students. As I moved to the district office and took the role of coordinator, I found um in working with teachers across the district, they continue to use the DBQ Project materials in their classrooms. I've had principals and teachers reach out to me independently to ask about how they can get another copy of DBQ Project materials in their classrooms. So we didn't stop using it. We continue to use it. Um, but it's not something that is replenished year over year. It's a physical copy of materials that are kept in the, in the school building.
In saying this, I spoke with several social studies teachers within the district. And some of them have, uh, I guess, older versions of the materials.
Yes.
Um, and then there are some that are just not being utilized at all. So is there a plan to ensure that if, if we're gonna vote on this procurement item and approve it, are we actually going to be using these resources uh so that they're not just like collecting dust in certain places? And then other programs are using them. The central questions and all of that, it seems to align very well to common core and even to wit and wisdom from what I hear. So that's great. But it will only really work if it's consistent throughout the district and we're not just what, I don't want to say wasting, but if some are utilizing them and then some aren't utilizing them as a resource, it'll make the, the, I guess, the, the results of achievement kind of uh inconsistent maybe.
Yes, thank you for bringing up that point. Um, we think that now the DBQ Project has released, after years of working on it, an elementary version of the program. Um, prior to that, it was only been used in sixth through 12th grade classrooms. So with the implementation of the elementary program, um, I'm working with the literacy team to actually train fourth and fifth grade teachers as they receive the materials and to talk about how the DBQ Project aligns with topics that are covered in wit and wisdom to strengthen the content knowledge of the students. And honestly, in some cases, to strengthen content knowledge of the teachers. Because as they go through this programming with their students, um, there are introductory essays that help everyone get a basis of the background knowledge that they need. So with the support of the literacy team, through uh training in the summer and through continued support, requests for feedback, requests for student data, we plan to kind of revitalize how we're implementing it, not only in the secondary, but now also in elementary school.
Thanks for that. And a point of uh clarification too, the contract term is through June 30th, 2022. Um, but then the implications say future funding will be dependent on the district's FY '21 and '22 operating budgets. Can, can someone explain that to me?
Laura Jones, Manager for Teaching and Learning. Um, so we wrote the contract for three years because we anticipate that this is a material that will continue to be used in schools. Um, it is sort of a unique material in that um once a school has the binder, they can reproduce the materials kind of as they need. So it's not a material that you necessarily have to purchase year over year. But we wanted to have the contract be set up in such a way that schools could purchase any additional materials as they need it. Um, but right now, there isn't a plan for a district office level allocation for additional materials. So it's really designed, so we're doing the initial purchase now. And then if schools need to purchase additional materials or if the vendor releases other units that schools may want to use, um, they'll have the ability to do that in FY '21 and '22.
Thank you. But it wouldn't come back before us unless, would it come back before us or no?
It wouldn't come back before you, um, unless there was a situation where there was an increased amount of spending and we needed to perhaps extend the contract. But we tried to write it in such a way that it would capture any spending that we can anticipate over the next three years.
Sure, thank you. Can I go to the other point? Or we have to vote on it?
Can I have another question on this?
And actually, it's, actually, it's not directly on this, but it's because we have the social studies lead in front of us and we don't usually. So, so, um, so I'm just wondering if, if this, this procurement item will help support ensuring that social studies is actually taught and covered at the elementary level? Um, and if you have any data about just basic compliance as far as master scheduling K through six for how much social studies our students are getting and when, and you don't need to have that right now, but because this will hopefully be something that will support or ensure that happens, would be great to hear back at some point.
Yes, I would love to bring that information back. Thank you.
Good. Motion to approve item 10.02? Moved by Commissioner Reed. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Bondima, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Chinia, Kashani, Reed, Frank, Berkeley. Motion passes eight zero with one absent. The next item for discussion is item 10.05, Improving Education. Commissioner McFadden had a few questions on this as well?
Thanks. It's my first time, it's my first time hearing about the networked improvement community um and these 10 schools um that, that are involved in this. I would like to know a little bit more information um about that. And then also, um, what have, it's only 10 schools, so would it be possible to perhaps extend the reach? Like what have we potentially learned from the effective, the effectiveness of what is happening with this program? And how could we potentially, if we possibly could, internally duplicate some of this? So we can have a broader reach um and maybe use our resources that way versus uh contracting out. So that's me being, in my role, wondering how it is actually working internally, if that makes sense.
Sure.
Okay.
Good evening. Janice Lane, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. Uh, this is a program and partnership that we've had in the district for a number of years. So the network aspect of it is a correlation. There were originally four schools that came together to work around improvement science and continuous improvement work. Part of the work around that was a focus on early literacy. So it was how do we bring teachers together to really investigate root cause analysis um and strategies that they want to test and try to actually replicate to improve what they're doing in their curriculum and their work in schools. There is a component in addition to this that we actually do take that learning and spread it district-wide mainly through professional development. So as you look at the contract, it's not just direct support to schools, but support to leadership here at Central Office. Uh, so for example, they've worked closely, closely with Ashley Cook, our Director of Literacy, around early findings around um work with foundations. So some of the work we've done with that has talked about an accelerated scope of learning for students so that the learning that those 10 schools were able to test and try was something that Ashley could then take across the district for professional development across the group. Uh, they also have a capacity building program where a number of teachers are identified that continue to come together from across those 10 schools to study and work together and open their sites for practice so that other first grade or kindergarten teachers can come in and visit that work in there uh so that there is capacity building structures built within to the contract.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Sure.
And this is going until uh 2020. The Matthew Henson folks are not here, but they're one of these um schools that are included. So I would be in, um, never mind. Thank you.
Sure. Any more questions on this item? Um, motion to approve item 10.05? Commissioner Reed moves. Anybody, or may I have a second? Commissioner Hassan, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Chinia, Kashani, Reed, Frank, Berkeley. Um, most, motion passes eight to zero with one absent. Uh, final item for discussion, uh, item 10.07, Johns Hopkins University Center for Talented Youth. Commissioner Reed had a couple of questions?
Yeah, I look at this as a game changer. Uh, one, it creates opportunity and also it creates exposure for these kids. So you have 60 first graders, 60 second graders, 60 third graders. In the third year, you have 300 because you add four and five. So you got 60 lucky kids. So how do they get selected? Who's selected? And how can we change and enhance and expand that program?
Dennis Truchus, Coordinator of Gifted Advanced Learning, again. Those are all excellent questions. I'd like to clone you because those are wonderful questions. To answer your basic question, how are these kids being selected? Well, one, they must attend one of the 97 pre-approved Title I schools that the state gave us as part of the LEAP grant condition. Um, we have done three in-person parent evenings at both Winds Falls and at Commodore John Rogers, which are serving as the hub schools. and at Commodore John Rogers, which are serving as the hub schools. We have emailed, we have given literature directly. Basically, we're looking for students that attend one of those 97 approved schools. They'll be rising first, second, or third graders. They have not already been formally identified as gifted learners. We would be in violation of our LEAP grant. We are about developing the talent. So these are students who maybe you as a teacher sit back and say, "I think there's something in this particular student, but the data are not there yet." And so the emerging scholars program is meant to kind of facilitate, develop that growth so they can be identifiable by traditional measures, whether that be the COGAT, NAGLARI, or the, any kind of measurements on achievement and for math and reading. Right now, I'll tell you, we're at 60%. We don't, we are not oversubscribed at this point in time. Right now, we're leaning a little heavier towards actually enrollment at Gwynn's Falls, happily. We're very happy to see the West Side is being well represented in that regard. You're absolutely right that the goal is to then add next year a, a third grade element and then a fourth grade element and after that? Fourth and fifth, sorry. I'm thinking of another program, sorry. Adding in fourth and then fifth grade over the next two years. We are still trying to recruit people. It's not like we're turning any away. We're looking at students that again, if they've been identified as talent development, which again, we prescreen, we screen all of our kindergarten students. We've done that now each of the last two years. So we have a good basis. We have over 1,000 students in the district that are currently in kindergarten or in first grade who are at least talent development level that could pre-qualify for consideration if they attend one of those 97 schools. We have looked at that information. We've targeted the communication to those parents, to those schools, to our gal liaisons to get that messaging out there. The next thing we'd probably do, we're gonna wait another two weeks. We'll probably do a robo-call targeted to specific schools. Our only concern with the robo-call recruitment is that because you do have to fit a set criteria, you have to be at one of these Title I schools and you can't already be formally identified. And we don't want to, we don't wanna create too much confusion, if we can avoid it. But certainly, our goal is to fill all 180 seats to have such great demand that I can then go maybe at some point to the CAO and others and say, "Hey, it'd be great if city schools would also help to kind of fund the expansion of this." Because you're absolutely correct, this is the right model to go. And we built this in, in unison with Johns Hopkins Center for Talented Youth because for the past five years, they've been modeling and developing and refining an emerging scholars program. Started it with Cecil Elementary in Mont Royal. And now we work with 15 schools, predominantly all but one or two are Title I schools. We've seen tremendous growth in development of kids that were not formally identifiable, but now we can identify and give them the enrichment that they need.
Our learning loss is huge. So how are the councils working with these families to say, "Hey, let's get this done"? Because you said you're only 6% done. Seems like-
We're, we're 64%, about 60% enrolled right now.
Seems like a layup. I mean, that's why-
And, and again, we've, communication has always been a bit daunting in general. And we're doing everything we possibly can. Like I said, we've had three community sessions in each of the communities for Gwynn's Falls and three for Commodore John Rogers. We've reached out through our network of people. We're working with communications. I suspect that we will be fully enrolled. We are actively recruiting and we've also, we're trying to make it a little bit easier for schools to help us identify some of these students. Even if they didn't do well in NAGLARI assessment, we're using something called the HOPE scale, which teachers kind of fill out as, it's not a recommendation, but it's a normed kind of measure that says, "Hey, we think there's something going on there." My ed specialist, Ray Limer, is, is running front and center on this. She's finishing up her doctorate at Hopkins in gifted education. So she's using all of the approved measures. I'm working obviously with her to make sure that we are doing right by students and complying with the LEAP grant considerations. We have lots of parents who've reached out to us that we just cannot accommodate because they don't attend one of the 97 Title I schools. So we wanna make sure that we have access every year for the next three years for that $400,000 the state is offering us because we wanna make full use of that $1.2 million for our kids.
Commissioner Bondima?
Hi. I'm really familiar with the program. Do you connect with best Baltimore Education Scholars, I mean Baltimore, best Baltimore Education Scholars? Because I remember Karen was, Karen Bond was active, you know Karen Bond, she was, she, I think she directed, directed the program. But do you connect with them? Because they have students in Title I schools. But they also work with selecting the best and the finest kids.
We have not directly worked with them. I am familiar with, with Karen. Have not direct, I will certainly add that as a follow-
But she's not there now.
No.
But I mean, the, the program is really- But I'm saying before, they, they screen them to go there. But they have a long list of kids who are attending those schools that you named. And, and I'm wondering if there's connection or partnership? Because it kind of gives you insight and saves you some data, I mean, time to collect data. Because I think they do the data. You were on the board there.
Well, we, we have, we have gone into a deep dive on all the kids that would be eligible and tried to communicate that as directly as possible to, to recruit. Again, the, the issue is also in part that because we're trying to do it at such an early age, when you have rising first graders, these kids are just emerging from kindergarten. And the fact that, you know, how do you get to this location? So you have to be able to have a parent or a guardian that can bring you there physically. We also have an understanding for the LEAP grant, we need to have like a 95% attendance rate. So we're very transparent with the parents that in order for us to get this refunded for the next two years, we have some conditions. So in a perfect world, we'd be able to take everyone that wanted to, but because of the constraints of the LEAP grant itself, we, we wanna get off the, the ground correctly. We wanna make sure that we are very transparent and honest with the state so that we in good faith can say, "We've done right by these kids" and done right by the, the auspices or the, the construct of the LEAP grant so we can continue to benefit and, and grow the program.
Thank you.
Yeah. But anyone have any connections? Please, by all means, please spread the word. It's a fantastic program. The kids are gonna have basically two adults in a room of 15 kids each.
And I had my microphone off during the whole thing. Motion passes eight to zero with one absent. Sorry about that. We have two final presentations under information and discussion. First is, I believe Ms. Price, is she? The school facility and program renaming? Da-da-da.
Good evening. It's been a while since I've sat in the seat. I am here, I'm sorry, my name is Nicole Price, Director of Community and Public Relations for the 21st Century Buildings Program. I am here tonight to present on the possibility of two renamings, one a facility and one a program. Excuse me, I ran in here though. In accordance with Section 1A and B of the Baltimore City Public Schools naming renaming policy, the Office of Engagement submitted a request to rename the Fairmount Hartford Building and only the Fairmount Hartford Building, which is where the REACH program will be relocated, and submitted a request to rename the Cherry Hill program and only the Cherry Hill program, not the building. Approval was granted on January the 9th for the 21st Century Buildings Program to engage community members in a discussion. As you know, REACH Partnership, which is the name of the high school program that will be moving into the building currently known as Fairmount Hartford this coming fall. Throughout the planning process for the Lake Clifton and Fairmount Hartford Buildings, starting back in 2013, we received a number of inquiries from community members, elected officials, staff on what the name of the Fairmount Hartford Building would be. Everything from if it, if it's gonna be Clifton Park, Little Lake, Digital Harbor. I mean, there were just so many different names thrown out with regards to the building that we discussed internally the confusion around the building name and thought that it made sense to bring some kind of continuity to the name. So currently, the building name is Fairmount Hartford, but it was once home to Clifton Park Middle School, which is a name that is currently over the building and will also be the main entrance for REACH Partnership. Fairmount Hartford or Fairmount is a geographical area. It is not the geographical area of where the school is. That is actually Clifton Park. Fairmount Hartford was also, the high school program was also located there and that is around the time that the building name was changed from Clifton Park to Fairmount Hartford. And then several other schools, Baltimore Aniak, Diploma Plus, Achievement Academy High School have all been located in the building. And as I stated earlier, REACH will be moving in the newly renovated, renovated building in September 2019. While the program name is REACH Partnership, the athletic teams play under the name Lake Clifton. Students can join the Lake Clifton Alumni Association upon graduation. And the name that is permanently over the main entrance or what will be the main entrance to the school building is Clifton Park. That is in stone. It's chiseled. I got a quote that it will cost like $80,000 to remove, which would also include some roofwork. And so it's not really feasible to remove the name off of the building. So in order to bring some content, oh, I'm sorry, Cherry Hill. This renaming process actually came about during what was the Arundel renaming. As we were talking about discussing the proposals for the Arundel Elementary School name, members of the community were much more visceral, visible in their response to the possibility of changing Cherry Hill. It was not something that we were actually discussing at the time, but community members were adamant that because of the history of this community, it was the, one of the first African-American communities dedicated to veterans returning from World War II. And they felt like, you know, we should not touch the name. But somewhere in that discussion, they recommended that we add the historic tour to honor the history of the community as well as noting, noting that the building became a historic landmark in 2004. So, so both of those are coming before you. For Fairmount Hartford, the recommendation is being made, as I said, to bring continuity to the building name. So we put out a survey to members of the community. All of them had the same survey, be it online or in person. And we posed three questions to them. Would you like to keep the name Fairmount Hartford? If so, it will be REACH Partnership at Fairmount Hartford Building with the name Clifton Park over top of the main entrance. Would you like the building to- Would you like the building name to be Clifton Park? If so, it will be REACH Partnership at Clifton Park Building with Clifton Park over the main entrance. Or do you prefer to name the building Lake Clifton Park? And I'll explain that in a second, Lake Clifton Park. If so, it will be REACH Partnership at Lake Clifton Park Building with Clifton Park over the main entrance. The original request was to rename it either Clifton Park or Lake Clifton. However, it was brought to my attention that we have a building named Lake Clifton, so we can't use the Lake, Lake Clifton name. In a discussion with now President, I'm at Mayor Young, we added Lake Clifton Park just to give some continuity to the Lake Clifton Alumni Association, but also continuity with the name that's currently over the building. So unlike other renaming processes, we did not solicit additional names. We didn't wanna add to the confusion. We stuck with the names that were already associated with the, the school program or the building. And as I, I guess I jumped ahead of my own presentation, the Cherry Hill historic name came about is in conversations regarding the Arundel renaming, where community members just started talking about adding the historic. This did not come to you last year because by the time we started talking about it in April, it was too late to bring it forth. So we did put in the request to look at it this year. And community members and parents participated in surveys that were left at the school, in, in class voting for students and staff, and then through class dojo. This vote did just close on Friday, and so the numbers in here are updated. The actual numbers for Fairmount Hartford, Fairmount Hartford votes are 27, Clifton Park 69, Lake Clifton Park 479. The total is 575 votes. The reason that this, this changed from what you have is there was a glitch in the survey on the day that it closed, so we had to extend the vote to make sure all of those who wanted to vote had an opportunity to vote. The Cherry Hill-
Ms. Price, is it not 355? It's a difference.
No. It's the, the numbers, all of those numbers are incorrect. So the Fairmount Hartford number is 27. The, the total of 27 votes for Fairmount Hartford. There were a total of 69 votes for Clifton Park and a total of 479 votes for Lake Clifton Park, bringing the total to 575. The total votes to rename the Cherry Hill, the historic Cherry Hill, there were 70 no votes, eight NA and 188 yeses, bringing the total vote to 266. To rename Cherry Hill, the historic Cherry Hill Elementary Middle School.
Had a stroke.
So adding-
Not really. I'm, I'm okay now.
Add, add the historic, we shouldn't really say rename, but add the historic to the name.
Okay, good, good. I'm glad to hear. I was raised out there.
We were, we were very clear. In fact, several people refer to this community, not just members who live in the community. You have, you have, there's East Baltimore, there's West Baltimore, then there's Cherry Hill. So it's been, it made extremely clear to us that Cherry Hill is a special place and we should not touch the name of that school building. I know that there was some concern about adding the historic to the name and how you find it when you look it up in the system, because most people will go for the Cherry Hill. In discussions with the Office of Achievement Academy, I'm sorry, Achievement Academy. The OAA, we discuss having it in the system as Cherry Hill Elementary School, comma, the historic. But as a school program and on their uniforms, on letterhead, they could list it as the historic Cherry Hill Elementary Middle School. So in accordance with board policy, we recommend renaming the building located at 255 Hartford Road, Lake Clifton Park Building and send the resolution to Baltimore City Council to officially rename the building. And we recommend renaming Cherry Hill Elementary Middle School the historic Cherry Hill Elementary Middle School. There is no impact on the building name, so we do not have to send a resolution to City Council. Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark has already agreed to submit the resolution to rename the building Lake Clifton Park Building.
Just to be clear, we're not voting on this tonight. This is just information.
Correct.
Allison, you wanted to add something?
So if we're gonna, if the way we're gonna officially use the name is gonna be Cherry Hill, what did you say, a comma, the historic?
The way we're gonna officially use the name is the historic Cherry Hill Elementary Middle School. To make it easier, so like if you go to the board, if you go to the city schools website and you're looking up Cherry Hill, most people are just gonna look for Cherry Hill. So have it listed as Cherry Hill Elementary Middle School, comma, the historic. But the program name would be the historic Cherry Hill Elementary Middle School.
Okay, but the challenge is that we have the historic Samuel Coleridge Taylor and it's listed as the historic. So we should be consistent in how we're treating them. So-
Y'all can sort that out in OAA.
I mean, it is an important question. I mean, I will say, it's a challenge. And we, you know, I do think we need to think about how many schools we're gonna designate as the historic.
But we're not gonna sort, we're not gonna sort that out now. It's a good catch. It's a good catch.
Questions? I'm sorry, should make one note. We did try to get in touch with the Fairmount Hartford alumni. They do have a semi-active Facebook page, but we could not, we didn't get any responses back. There are about 230 members on that page, but we haven't been able to get any responses back to make sure that they had an opportunity to vote in this as well.
Do you have a question? Commissioner McFadden?
Since you're here and we're talking about that building, are there any updates on the athletic field, the field and that process?
I'm gonna defer to our illustrious chief of staff.
Fairmount Hartford, the field and the issue with Wreckin' Parks? And are, are there any updates with that yet?
I mean, we're still working on a number of things related to that. So you've actually had the most recent meeting that, that I have that, on that. We're talking to Wreckin' Parks about working out an arrangement to, that we would do certain enhancements to the field, like add seats to the field. They had planned for 80 seats. We need 300 for competition, so we would add 200 seats to it. There is a, we'd want to rubberize the surface of the, there's a walking path around the, the facility, I mean, around the field that we wanted to rubberize so it could be used for practice for track. And we wanted to add a sound booth. What we're trying to work out is whether or not we can use 21st century funds to pay for it. And there was one other question. That's the main question.
Yeah, I think just going through the process of looking at the MOU to see if we can use 21st century funds to pay for it. I don't think there are any.
Yeah.
I think you captured everything.
They're gonna go forward with the, with their, their process to get the plans approved. And so we'll have to add in the plans for those various pieces. It is not going to be ready for this school year, so we're also working on a temporary, we're gonna have to work out a temporary arrangement. We delayed, if you recall, the surplusing of Lake Clifton until December of 2019 so that for the fall football, we would have act, we, we still have- so that for the fall football, we would have, we still have control over the facility so that the football team can still play on the existing field and use the existing locker rooms in the old building to, for practice and so on. We, for fall lacrosse and for, probably for football the following, I'm sorry, for spring lacrosse and for football the following fall of 2020, we will probably need to work out an arrangement with the, with the city about leasing right of use for that facility, for that facility and field.
Because their systems are down, we probably have a little more time to work out the MOU language, because I don't think they can submit anything because the systems are still down for the city.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I'm saying that because their systems are down, we probably have a little more time to work out things. They probably can't make the submission because all of their systems are still down.
That's helpful, I just also want to take into consideration the, the success of that athletic program there and the potential of losing students if they don't have adequate facilities in this particular coming school year. So it sounds like it won't really be impacted because we're making arrangements to make sure that there is a plan in place, so that was my concern.
Yeah, no, it's a legitimate concern, we have to make sure we have a permanent solution in place. For this year, we think we're okay in terms of use of the same field they're using now. But the longer-term solution is we have a serious sense of urgency about making sure we get that resolved.
Thanks.
Thanks, Nicole. Our final presentation asks Ms. Alvarez to come back up and talk to us about changes in locations for charter schools.
Hello, everybody, Angela Alvarez, Executive Director of the Office of New Initiatives.
And I'm Lindsay Anderson, I'm a specialist in the Office of New Initiatives. So tonight, we're gonna share information about four changes in charter school locations, and then we'll come back on June 11th for a vote. For all of the schools, they had to submit plans that included their renovation plans for their new buildings to ensure that the buildings will be ready for students and meet COMA requirements. They had to submit financing plans for any renovations, and also to show that any additional staff added would be supported by per pupil funding so that we know that these changes are sustainable. They had to submit a recruitment and retention plan for students. They had to show documentation of community. All of the material they have submitted is still being vetted by district offices, including finance, facilities, and planning. And we will come back in June, like I said, for a vote. The first school that we're sharing tonight is Baltimore Collegiate School for Boys. They're currently in a temporary space in the Chinquinn Pin Building. That space is going to be used for swing space starting next school year. They're gonna be, they're proposing to move to the Professional Development Center, the space that was occupied by FATE for one year. So it's another temporary space for the school while they look for a permanent location.
Commissioner Hassan?
Is my memory correct that they've moved, we moved them about a year ago or two years ago as well? And if so, what are we doing to help mitigate the impact of this regular moving?
Yeah, so we, so it is true, they started off in the Winston Building for a year as their first temporary swing, then moved to the Chinquinn Pin Building, which they've been in for the last two years, and now moving to PDC. We've had regular check-ins with them on updates on their permanent search for a permanent facility, including they met with, I think this is two or three months ago, with Dr. Santelisus, with their full board to update on where they are with their search. And so they have some more concrete buildings options that they're working on, but they know that it's high stakes, there's accountability, or clear deadlines around acquiring a permanent facility because we can't continually be in a swing situation.
So if any of that sort of constant-ish moving is the, under the responsibility of the central office side, I hope we'll take that into consideration when we look at their three-year review. That enrollment is likely to be impacted, things like that, by moving people around.
This is fully their responsibility. So for charter schools, their locations, securing their locations, their permanent location are their responsibility. We, as the authorizing, as the board, as the authorizing body, ensures that the facilities that they meet, meet COMA requirements, that they've done their due diligence in terms of vetting with the community, that there's sustainability. So the items that Lindsay shared at the beginning are important parts of those vetting processes because these become facilities that house public school students and largely use taxpayer dollars to fund. And so we make sure there's a due diligence process with schools to ensure that their plans are sound, have been appropriately vetted with communities, that there's real community support, that there's sustainability in terms of funding and the resources to sustain these changes. So we do a lot of back and forth to understand these things and vet it through different offices to advise you so that you have all of that when you make your decisions.
The next school that we're sharing with you tonight is the Lily Mae Carol Jackson School. They were also housed in the Chinquinn Pin Building. They have found a permanent location in the Paquin Building. They have purchased the building using a loan. They have also secured grant funding to support renovations to the building. They've engaged the community in the new location. They have the support of the Community Association, the Coldstream Homestead-Monobello Community Association. They've been working with Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. They have shared the new location with their families and are having family events at the new location this spring and summer, and are working on transportation plans as well at the new site. The next school is Baltimore International Academy West. This is a new charter school that's opening this fall. They have found a location in the Rognell Heights Building. This will be a permanent location for the school. This was a school that was recently used as a school, so doesn't require a lot of renovations. They've secured funding through the Maryland Charter Startup Grant, so they'll be using part of that to do any small renovations like painting. They're already in there, starting to do things like that. But because it was recently used as a school building, it doesn't require recent renovations. They've done a lot of community outreach in the neighborhood, so they've got the support of a lot of the community associations that are in that area, as well as the Councilman Christopher Burnett. The last school that we're sharing information about tonight is Baltimore Montessori Public Charter School. This is a request in two parts. So the first part is a request to expand into additional space. This would be the third building for the school, and it's located two blocks north of the existing school buildings, the existing school buildings. They will be partnering with the Central Baltimore Partnership to purchase the building. Some of the funding for the purchase and the renovation is tied to getting approval. So some of the funding is still being worked out. And this new building would be to house additional early learning classrooms. They have begun doing outreach to parents. As you saw earlier, they have also received a lot of support from the different community organizations in the area. And just an important note on this one, the facility wouldn't be ready until 2021, school year 2021. So it would be a year from this school year.
And just to make sure that we're being super clear, they're retaining the property they have, so this is about expanding the size of their school. So they're acquiring an additional facility for the early learning component is what their request is about, just so we're super clear.
Commissioner Hassan?
So I just wanna key this up for Allison for when she comes to present to us questions that I'll have. Obviously, I'm very in support of Montessori, and I think it's really proactive to get ahead of the universal pre-K and creating more seats. But the concern is Margaret Branch and Joseph Frisco and polling from those areas. So if Allison can come ready with information of where the home zones, yes, it's early childhood and there aren't conflicting early childhood programs, but the idea is that they then matriculate through your program. So just so that we're really conscientious of the impact on the other schools, where your students are currently coming from as far as the Margaret Branch or Joseph Frisco zoned areas would be really helpful.
Madam Chair?
Yep, Commissioner McFadden?
Just really quickly, so there, the building that they're, that they're planning to expand to or that they're looking to expand to is not directly where the current, the existing building is?
It's nearby.
It's nearby, so, so they have apparently the human capital to operate at campuses that are slightly separate.
So that's one of, like, our questions to them. So they've provided like a staffing plan about how they would manage the, that other facility. So they do have a staffing plan that shows a person who would be in charge of, like, kind of overseeing the day-to-day operations. It's close enough, you know, they have an operator, and Allison checked her, so it's close enough to her where she can, you know, get to the school as needed. But they do have like a staffing plan about how they would manage the different properties on a day-to-day basis.
Other questions, comments? So we'll come back to this on June.
Yeah, there's a, the second part to the request that you'll be asked to consider is an expansion to their enrollment cap. So this is related to expanding into the new building, expanding their seats in early childhood. They are requesting a cap increase from 398 students to 554 students over five years. And again, that wouldn't go into effect until, they wouldn't start adding students until school year 2021.
The key thing for the board into your consideration, we have to think long-term. So because they start with a program, with students who start as three-year-olds and four-year-olds, what you're approving, if they retain students, has an impact beyond the contract term. So we want to make sure that you understand the full trajectory once those students matriculate up into higher grade levels. So it's important to not just look at what they're asking for in '23, '24, but what that means once those three-year-olds become eighth graders. Because that's really in effect what you would be approving. So we want to make sure that you understand that.
It means that the cap would be 554.
It would be 554 in '23, '24, but those three-year-olds don't become kindergarten students until '21, '22, right? And then they're in second grade in '22 and '23, and then they're in third grade. So you need to understand the full trajectory.
Right, but at the end of the day, there's never more than 554.
No, there, no, there would be more in the, in, in '24, '25.
If I, when I see enrollment cap, that tells me that the most students who will be in the school ever is 554.
So what we've asked the school to submit that you'll have in your materials is a ten-year plan. So you see, you understand the full matriculation beyond '23, '24.
Okay, I'll wait to look at the material.
The thought would be that those kids would have to find another school if they moved up in grades. Yeah. That's the, that's the problem you would have.
Yeah, I just, I mean.
They would have to find another school.
There's serious financial implications for this district when we increase the caps in charter schools. Like, they're like, a lot more expensive. But we have to look at the material.
And then this last slide just shows the effect of the cap rate change requests over time. So the total enrollment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our items for this evening. Upcoming meetings, there's a P-CAB meeting here at 6:30 on May 16th. Ops Committee meets here at 10 o'clock on May 21st. Policy Committee meets on that same day, May 21st at 3:30. We'll all be back together on May 28th. The executive session starts at what time on May 28th? Still 3 o'clock? 1 o'clock.
Tentatively, depending on the.
So if the executive session starts at 1 o'clock, what happens from 3 to 5? She said earlier that the charter renewal starts at 7.
Well, let the, we'll let the, resolve that, but we had, I virtually had it scheduled from 3 to 5.
That would be odd, because you would never schedule something like that in the middle of the day. So that's unusual. We don't schedule our charter review sessions be, what's that? Yeah, I think it's supposed to be at 7, so that, somehow, somehow, I think, if you guys could resolve that and let us know, because if we come here from 1 to 3, and then the board meeting starts from 5 to 7, and the charter review is from 7 to 9, then we got a gap, a two-hour gap in there. So you can just check it out and let us know. So one way or the other, we'll, we'll all be back here on May 28th for a long time. We will be here for a long time. And the final meeting on the list is the Teaching and Learning Committee will meet on Tuesday, June 7th at 3:30. Any other items for the good of the whole?
No, June 6th.
June 7th, what did I say?
It's June 4th.
So this is a mistake on here.
The 7th is a Friday.
This is a mistake, so Tuesday, June 4th, Teaching and Learning at 3:30. I'm sorry, I'm just reading from what I got on the sheet. My bad. Okay, any other items for the good of the whole?
I just wanna note how much earlier the meeting ended when I was sitting here. Just, I'm just saying that it ended much more quickly, so.
Not a whole lot, 45 minutes.
I was just gonna wish the great Vernon Reed again a happy birthday.
That is true.
Happy birthday, Vernon.
You're welcome.
He does not look very happy with that proclamation. With that, can I have a motion to, uh-huh, can I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Hassan, all in favor. Motion passes 8 to 0 with 1 absent, actually 8 to 0 with 2 absent. We are officially adjourned.